Your board meeting to order. Are there any public comments for items in closed session? All right, then we will recess to closed session. Meeting to open session. We did not take any action in closed session. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Are there any changes?
No changes.
I move approval of the agenda.
All second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, Jennifer, your preferential vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Lavender?
Yes.
And I will say yes, the motion is passed 5-0. All right, trustee Kuziak, please read the mission statement.
In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent, inspired staff utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board's agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak form or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. Right, student board member report. Jennifer.
Hi, so last week, February 1st, the schools in the district celebrated a happy Lunar New Year. At CVHS, we had various clubs hosting Lunar New Year games and activities during lunch as part of S.A.S.P.O.P., which again stands for Season of Service Period of Peace, which is going until, sorry, from January to March. And this week's club's activities are held by the UNICEF Club and focusing on children's rights. On the day after Lunar New Year, February 2nd, CVHS held a "This is How We Do It," Share Your Story Walk and Bike Event, which is similar to a walk-in World of School Day, where we recorded the modes of transportation that students used to get to school. And one of the environmental commissioners who helped direct this event is actually sitting in the audience right now, so thank you. And the student participants had the chance to earn a $50 Clipper card towards public transportation in the Bay Area. This week at CVHS, we are hosting our second semester dodgeball tournament, which includes a spirit week. So Monday was pajama day, and then throughout the week, taki tours day, pink out, tie dye, and jersey day. And also, this week's winter sports are ending and spring sports are starting. And as you can see by my outfit, tonight is the last boys' basketball game of the season, which is also senior night. As for Stanton Elementary, they are hosting a clone day next Friday on the 18th, which is super fun. And some schools are also doing Valentine's Day fundraisers. I know at Chabot, they are selling Valentine's Day boxes. And at CVHS, we are doing our iconic rose grams. And lastly, at CVHS, we're having a career awareness week, and it's also Guidance Counselor Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, we'll move on to a school report. And tonight, we have Creekside in the house.
Yes, we do. We are excited to have Creekside here, so I'll ask Dr. Shi to come up. And I see that our wonderful vice principal, Ms. Pamela Wolf, is here. One up. Good evening, I'm Susan Shi, principal at Creekside Middle School. Here with me are our assistant principal Pamela Wolf, our parent teacher club president, Julia Winkelbach, our school social worker Jessica Baez, and three of our eighth grade students, Adriana James, Alana Thompson, and Cyrus Tang. We want to thank our school board for inviting us to spotlight Creekside Middle School. It is an honor and a pleasure to present to you a glimpse of what this year has been for our school community. After almost a year of distance learning and then hybrid for three months in the last school year, our students, families, staff were eager and ready to return to in-person learning this school year. Knowing that it was essential to provide support and resources to ease our students back onto campus in the midst of the global pandemic, reopening Creekside had three main priorities: safety, community, and wellness.
Good evening. So ensuring the safety of physical and emotional for our students and staff on campus has been a main and ongoing focus. All of our facilities are equipped with proper ventilation and air purifiers, and personal protective equipment has been available and is replenished as needed in PPE bags in each classroom. We have hand washing stations and standalone hand sanitizers around our campus available for everyone to use. We've also increased our classified support in our health office and triage and isolation rooms. Our whole Creekside community has been supportive. Our parent teacher club provided each student with a care package with masks, hand sanitizer, and other supplies. Families keep our students safe by keeping them home when they're sick. Staff and students wear their mask indoors and outdoors on campus. Everyone works together to make sure this is a safe and in-person school year for all of us. Not only physical safety is prioritized at Creekside, but also emotional safety. This year, we have an extra campus supervisor to support the care and welfare of our students, increased counseling support, including two full-time counselors, increased numbers of Eden Counseling interns, and telehealth counseling. In addition, we have a social worker providing intensive support and wraparound case management. During tutorials, teachers have delivered Positive Behavior Intervention System lessons, PBIS lessons, to review behavioral expectations and reinforce health and safe behavior. And Ms. Shi and I review safety protocols in our Creekside community meetings through a live virtual presentation to all advisory classes biweekly.
Hello, I'm Julia Wink, and I'm here to talk to you about community and the sense of community we're building here at Creekside. As a parent with two Creekside students, I have a sixth grader that just came in this year and an eighth grader that's exiting. I'm super pleased to see that our teachers and staff started building relationships and making connections with students in the classroom. For our sixth graders, they are usually linked with a student web leader who teaches them the ropes. My daughter went through that, and it was amazing for her. It takes the fear away from entering sixth grade, and that way, they are supported through their transition into middle school. Athletics, clubs, and extracurricular activities resumed with our COVID safety protocols. In fact, we're having games, which is great. Both my kids are in sports. It's amazing to watch everybody participate and the parents being able to watch. Visitors are still not allowed on campus, but the PTC was active in partnering with the school and growing our school community and planning fundraisers and end-of-year activities. We're looking forward to our eighth graders to graduate this year, and hopefully, we can plan some stuff for them. Teachers are given staff development and facilitating community circles in their classrooms with the support of our school social worker. Video production students created Monday morning announcements, videos to remind our students of upcoming events and activities weekly. Moreover, Creekside Community Meeting was created as a school-wide virtual assembly where principal and assistant principal talk with students and staff about the issues that are affecting our school community and discuss things that are happening currently on the campus.
Okay, so thank you. I'm going to address wellness. Want me to quick move? There we are. And I wanted to start with a moment of silence for the word wellness, because it's been a lot this year, right? And for everybody included here tonight, and families and communities and teachers and students, and so it's really been a priority, so I wanted to acknowledge that from Creekside. And so, in an effort to address this wellness concern and need throughout the school, we've really prioritized it, coming back from the pandemic, and acknowledging that there are going to be an increased need in certain areas such as housing, basic needs, food, clothes, shelter, grief and loss, and so really addressing those areas from a supportive lens. And so, yes, I was, what's the word, labeled or introduced as intensive case management, but I also wanted to share the great things going on, right, and the successes, and we are working hard. But two of my main takeaways are the support that we have for each other as a staff and really being driven and supported from the board and parents in the community. And then also, she's fully the belly laughs out on the blacktop, like seeing the kids happy to be together and back and engaging and enjoying each other. That's really been a driving force in this wellness effort. And so, alongside our two academic counselors, we're providing group counseling in small groups. We are pulling out and responding to crisis and offering students and families resources within the community and onsite, such as individual counseling from Eden interns and myself and other group opportunities across the campus. We're not only facilitating positive interactions in the classroom that's going to every student and available to every student, but we're also doing small group pullouts for that as well, such as social skills groups and things of that nature to build back or address some of the deficits we're seeing with social-emotional learning. And then we are doing conflict mediation, because that's a middle school thing regardless, right? So every year, it'll be conflict mediation addressed on the campus. And then our counselors are doing amazing, school counselors in the school counselor week, so shout out to them. They're doing in-the-classroom lessons as well and addressing bullying and other mental health awareness, and we have themed months. And so the students are aware of it prior and able to ask questions and engage with the counselors in their small school, classroom setting. So that's always helpful for building community too, because they're within their peers that they're used to rather than in a pullout. So that's going to every student in the school. And then we continue to partner with community agencies, like we mentioned earlier, with having Eden counselors on campus and then partnering with our parent groups. And hopefully, as we move forward in this post-pandemic time, we will be able to invite other community agencies on campus and partner again like we did in the past. And so, our big project this year is going to be to follow in the high school's amazing footsteps and build a wellness center on campus. And so we've identified the location, and we're starting that process and really taking inventory of needs right now. And so, gonna check in with students and families and staff and really try to create the same impact that the high school wellness centers had, and it's been phenomenal. And it's really supported the high school throughout the pandemic, so we hope to learn from them and continue and partner. And so, aside from that huge project, we're also gonna lean on our consistence, which is we have tutorials biweekly, we have RTI lessons that can do small group intervention, and we can lean on those academic wellness supports as well, like homework club and tutoring after school. We have online and in-person tutoring available. And so those are able to address if there's limitations with, you know, childcare or having to be out for whatever COVID absences are approved and understandable. And so, aligning with the current needs of our students has allowed our staff to cultivate an environment for learning that is appropriate, compassionate, and effective. And so, thank you.
Focusing on our priorities of safety, community, and wellness as Creekside reopened, an active student life resumed on our campus in no time. Our students were engaged in sports, clubs, and extracurricular activities. We quickly learned that by providing spaces where students can find a sense of belonging, build community, and develop leadership, they were empowered to co-create their own learning and their middle school experience. What emerged is the school year, what emerged the school year was our students' spirit of collaboration and a personal sense of power in helping to make our school community better for everyone. For example, a seventh grade student who petitioned for a student versus teachers dodgeball game by getting her peers and staff members signed up saw her petition became a reality in November. Organized by leadership students and teachers, students and staff members played a dodgeball game on their blacktop during lunchtime with everybody gathering to cheer them on. Also, at the beginning of the school year, our students took charge in starting clubs, such as art club, drama club, badminton club, and much more. Last week, our leadership students took the lead in our Lunar New Year celebration. They decorated the front of our school with red lanterns and paper tigers, and they created an informational display celebrating Lunar New Year. In addition, a video presentation on the history and tradition of Lunar New Year was shown to students schoolwide during their advisory classes. Leadership also kicked off the celebration of Black History Month last week as they worked with our video production students to present a video weekly during Monday morning announcements. Each week, there'll be a video highlighting important African-American figures who embodied Black excellence and have shaped history. Our California Junior Scholastic Federation Club students also joined the celebration by creating Black History Month bulletin board featuring important historical and present figures who changed the world. Tonight, we have four student leader who made a video presentation to show you what makes
This is our presentation.
Hi, I'm Alana Thompson.
Hi, I'm Adriana Hyve.
Hi, I'm Ari Spoile.
Hi, I'm Tyrece Tang.
We are eighth grade students from Creekside Middle School. We are here to tell you how amazing our school is.
There are so many incredible things about Creekside that make it feel like a second home. One of the things that makes this school so wonderful is the staff. The staff are so generous and always willing to help. They made the transition from elementary to middle school so easy. I was especially nervous because I came from a really small school where there was only one class per grade, so I was really unsure how the transition from elementary school to middle school was going to be. But the wonderful staff and web students helped make that transition easy.
Web stands for Where Everyone Belongs. It's a program where eighth graders like us help sixth graders with their transition into middle school. Going into middle school was really stressful, but having upperclassmen help you get comfortable with the school made it a lot less stressful. Also, having these wonderful people accept me for who I am and get me out of my comfort zone really helped me become who I am now. And those are just a few things that make this school so spectacular.
And we also have a lot of sports options here at Creekside, some of which are basketball, soccer, volleyball, cheer, and track. When trying out and participating in these sports, you're interacting with a bunch of new people that you never even thought you would meet. It's one of our favorite things about our sports here at Creekside. You're able to connect with others while participating in a sport you take pride in.
Creekside also has a lot of electives, and if what you want to do isn't an elective, you can also start a club. Some of our electives here at Creekside are Spanish, band, orchestra, leadership, yearbook, choir, video journalism, careers, health, and habit. Creekside provides fun electives that you'll enjoy doing. There are also many exciting clubs at Creekside. The best thing about it is that students have the ability to form any type of club, as long as it's school-appropriate, of course. These clubs could bring all students from every grade together.
Also, here at Creekside, there's an amazing leadership program for eighth graders. We're able to run fun activities, events, and more for the students. We do lunchtime activities like escape rooms and group activities, but we also do things like guess the teacher by the baby photo, art contest, and spirit.
Leadership isn't only about putting on fun events. It's a way for eighth graders to help the school and teachers and learn about good leadership qualities. We pick up trash around the school, and we go and help teachers when they need it. You're also able to be in an excellent environment with good people. At Creekside, we've been given an excellent education and have a large amount of support, both personal and academic support. We have math and English booster classes for students who need extra support. Our counselors are available during school hours if you need to talk about school problems or personal problems. We're also given excellent support systems, which include homework club, full support from all of our teachers, and a new online tutoring system, PayPro.
Lastly, one of the astounding things about Creekside Middle School is that safety is their top priority, and we have a wonderful community that the staff are working hard to keep safe.
And there have been a lot of changes in safety precautions that have been placed recently because of COVID.
Creekside has done their best to protect us all from the virus and other alarming situations.
In doing so, we have been able, they've been able to give us a proper education while acknowledging our safety. One of the ways that helps the community and students is R.O.R.O., respect, ownership, acceptance, and responsibility.
Respect. Everyone here at Creekside is very respectful towards them.
Ownership. All the students take ownership of their actions.
Acceptance. Everyone at Creekside, students and staff, all are very accepting of each other.
Responsibility. Everyone is responsible for their actions. The acronym R.O.R.O. helps Creekside stay united as a community. This is what makes Creekside so special to us. We hope that you enjoyed our video presentation. Thanks for watching.
So as you can see, when we empower our students to take action, it leads to greatness. Thank you for joining us in our presentation on the journey of reopening Creekside Middle School campus this year. We appreciate the opportunity to showcase Creekside and our incredible learning community of students, staff, and families who work together to build a culture of academic excellence, equity, and responsibility for all.
Thank you for your presentation. After a couple of recognitions, we'll have a chance to comment and ask you questions to get to know Creekside a little more.
Hi, I'd like to invite Mateo Sheriff to join me up here.
If you want to come back behind to take pictures, you're more than welcome to.
The governance team, along with Creekside Middle School, are proud to honor Mateo Sheriff. Mateo Sheriff is a current eighth grader at Creekside Middle School. Taking both orchestra and choir, Mateo balances school and athletics while maintaining a high GPA throughout middle school. Mateo is described by his teachers as exemplifying the positive behavior intervention and supports expectations: R.O.R., respect, ownership, acceptance, and responsibility. Mateo is always respectful towards his staff and his peers. He greets everyone with a smile and a hello. He leaves every class session by expressing gratitude to his teachers. Mateo takes ownership of his schoolwork by knowing what work needs to be done and asking for help when it is needed. If he is absent, he always checks in with his teachers to see what needs to be done to stay on track. Mateo always makes wise decisions, and when facing a challenge. Finally, Mateo is always where he needs to be, when he needs to be there. His work is always done to the best of his ability, and he advocates for himself when he needs help. The governance team joins Creekside Middle School in honoring Mateo Sheriff as an outstanding
Mateo, would you like to introduce anyone that came with you this evening?
Today, I have my family here. Here's my grandma, and my mom and dad, and my aunt and uncle.[1571.53][1571.53](applause)
Thank you for coming tonight. All right, Vice President Whitaker will do the next recognition.
Mr. Jim Brazil is not here tonight, so I'll be reading the recognition, and then hopefully somebody from staff can provide this to him. The governance team, along with Creekside Middle School, are proud to honor Coach Jim Brazil for volunteering countless hours over the years to Creekside Wrestling, to the Creekside Wrestling Program. The program would not have been successful without his dedication, commitment, and love of wrestling and Creekside kids. Coach Brazil's dedication and mentorship to our youth is to be commended. Each and every year, Coach Brazil's wrestling team had the most student athletes of any of the sports at Creekside. This was a direct result of the quality of the program, the knowledge he possessed, and the team-family atmosphere he created. His time and commitment to our program extended well past the short three months of the school season. Coach Brazil offered his time during the summer months. These summer sessions were offered at Castro, to all Castro Valley students, because, as Coach Brazil put it, "We will all eventually wrestle as one team for Castro Valley High." His love of wrestling led him to coaching at Creekside, and we are so fortunate to have him over the years. But it is his love of the Castro Valley community that has left a lasting impression on so many. Once again, Creekside Middle School thanks you for your efforts and contribution in touching so many lives of our youth at Creekside and the Castro Valley community. The governance team joins Creekside Middle School in honoring Jim Brazil as an outstanding
All right, Ms. Shi, can you come back up so we can ask some questions? And thank you. Jenny, you want to start?
Yeah, sure. So I went to Creekside, so I was super excited for tonight, and I was also surprised that Alana and Adriana did not tell me that they were gonna be here tonight, because I'm the, one of the student coaches for the Creekside cheer team, and they're on it. So I'm glad to see you here tonight.
Surprise.[1725.18][1725.18](laughing)
Yeah, when I was there yesterday for the game, I saw the Lunar New Year decorations. I didn't know that was put on by actual leadership students, so I'm really impressed by that. And of course, congratulations to Mateo. Staying on top of my work is something that I struggle with, so I applaud you for that. And it was just great seeing familiar faces and new ones from the school that I went to.
Well, thank you for being here tonight, everyone from Creekside. As a dad of a student at Creekside, it's really great to get a better understanding of who walks those halls and what are the values that we're hearing there. And I just want to thank everyone who came out tonight, the students, the parent volunteers, the staff. It's really great that you're spending some time to honor the work that happens there. Mateo, it sounds like the music department at Castro Valley High School is gonna be fighting over you and your skills. I want to wish you good luck in high school. And to Mr. Brazil, wherever you are, thank you for having an impact in our students' life. I love this community meeting that you all do. Teddy has told me about it. And it's this radical form of transparency of hearing adults make decisions and talk about what's happening at school. If you could just describe it for us here so people can understand that a bit more, I'd really appreciate that.
So it came out of leadership because we had kind of talked about how the administration used to go from class to class and review the binder reminder, going over the behavioral expectation. So, you know, with COVID and the protocols, we were, I had to kind of think about, what can I do to do that in a safe way? So we decided to, you know, you kind of building, kind of in line with building community, we decided to have Creekside Community Meeting. And it was a link, it's a Google Meet link. And during advisory, all the class get online. And I am, you know, Ms. Wolf and I are projected onto the projector and we talk about what's, what, what are the issues that are affecting the community. Good things too. We talk, we just spend a lot of time talking about Lunar New Year celebration and also kind of the Black History Month. And so I think this really gives them a way to be part of the community and hear what's happening. And so that's, that's how we did it. But one, one funny thing was that one of the teachers was like, "The kids see you guys and your face, you know, your large head appears onto the projector. You guys look like President Snow from Hunger Games."
Keep it up and thank you. And I'm sure someone in my household will be leaving his lunch at home and I might need to run down to the school and deliver a gun.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight and giving such a great report. I think obviously a lot of us have connections to Creekside here tonight. My two daughters went to Creekside and had a great time over there during their education here. And, you know, I was able, during that brief period of time when we were allowed to come on campus and so forth, I was able to visit Creekside in the fall and got to see most of the classrooms, I think, and to see a lot of these programs in action. And what a great place it is. It's great to be back over there. And I think what you're doing here to build community and to care for the students in all the various ways that you described tonight is really terrific work. So thank you so much for telling us all about it. And finally, I'll just say, congratulations, Mateo, and congratulations to Coach Brazil. And thanks to all of them for their work. So thank you for coming and giving a great report.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, I'm very glad to see Creekside new Principal Shi. I did not have a student at Creekside, but I did actually work there one year, one class, a math class that I had taught. And it was, they were really wonderful, very helpful people when I was at Creekside. You had a lot of acronyms. I was actually trying to learn your jargon a bit. And so I wrote down safety, community wellness. I've got the ROR, I think, responsibility, opportunity, acceptance, and respect. But my favorite one is WEB, where everyone belongs. I think that's just so sweet, darling, and what we really want at Creekside and all of our schools. So thank you very much for all of your good, hard work and congratulations to Mateo and Coach Brazil.
Thank you, Principal Shi and Creekside Community for coming out and sharing us the lovely things that you're doing at your school. I want to commend you for taking the time during the pandemic to recognize what students, families, and staff are going through and how you've combined community, safety, and wellness together. And I loved how you talk about physical and emotional support because it's more about the whole child and making sure that all kids physically are safe, but also emotionally safe to learn in an environment that they belong. And, you know, this speaks to our message of all means all, creating safe spaces for everyone, both physically and emotionally. And the work that you're doing, it's helping kids get through a very tough time. And I love how there's transition for sixth graders. That's such a hard transition going from fifth grade into middle school. Middle school is hard and a regular time, let alone during COVID. And then preparing eighth graders to be successful at the high school. So I want to thank you all for your dedication to the students and the families. Everything you're doing is, is what we want to see. And lastly, Mateo, you sound like a well-rounded individual. You're academic, you're into the arts, you care about others. And, you know, Creekside will miss you, but Castro Valley High School will be lucky to have you. And Coach Brazil, we're sorry we couldn't see you tonight, but we commend you on your continued commitment to sports and the community in Castro Valley. Thank you.
I think what really stands out when you share all of the things that are happening and we've observed as we visit Creekside is this nurturing and caring environment that's created so that students feel comfortable, safe, so that they can focus on their academic, you know, learning. I have to say, I've got to get some Hot Wheels and join that Hot Wheel King because I saw it when I was there. But it's just that sense of community with your parent organization, all of you, and with the Spies as a social worker there. I just know the kind of work that you guys are doing is so impactful, an excellent job. You know, it's, it's great. It's always really interesting when you start a new school with, as a, as a principal and to just kind of continue some of the wonderful traditions, but also do things that are different. And I'm just so impressed, that video with the students, you guys were amazing. That was really, really great.
I was student-driven. I didn't do anything. They took it, you know, took on this project and they created it and the script was written by them. I'm incredibly proud of them.
That was really, really awesome. Student empowerment is always so important. That's when they're engaged, then they can take leadership. And what's really awesome is they see the result of their, them being empowered. They actually see what's, what they've done. Mateo, you're an amazing, you're a wonderful student. I can't wait to see you in high school. But what stands out as we talk about Mateo is the fact that he knows where to be at all times, on time, getting his work done. But really, I'm impressed with how you show gratitude towards others. And that just says a lot about you. And I'm sure that your family is extremely proud of you as well as us. And Coach Brazil, when we talk about coaching, it's not just physically coaching, but it's mentoring that really helps our students grow. And just a couple of weeks ago, when we were talking to Coach Brosnan, what really came out was how he mentored and was really helping these students grow. So thank you so much and congratulations. This was a great presentation.
Thank you, Principal Shi. I get to be the last to speak and fully agree with everything that everyone has said. I wanted to thank Mr. Brazil, and I'm disappointed he's not here. My son was on the wrestling team in seventh grade and he had a terrible break of his arm during one of the wrestling practices. And Mr. Brazil sat in the ER with us the whole night. And then he came back the next day to check on Ben. So I know how dedicated he is to his sport and to the students. And I wish I could have said that to him in person and I will surely have another chance to do that. But I'm glad that he is being honored by Creekside tonight. Ms. Wink, thank you for all that you do for, as a parent leader at Creekside. It's greatly appreciated. So much of what happens in schools happened because of parent leaders like yourself, so thank you. And Ms. Baez, I've only gotten to see you in online meetings, so it's nice to actually see you in person and to hear the heartfelt description of the wellness program at Creekside. So thank you for being here. Principal Shi, would you like to introduce any other staff that is here?
Yes. So we do have our sixth grade teacher, Ms. Woodeski. She's in the audience, supporting our staff and students and family. And then we do have also families here. I believe Adriana Jaime's parents are here. And Cyrus Tang's mom is here. We also have Mateo's family, uncles, aunt, and grandma. And, oh, I'm so sorry. So Alana's parents are in the back. And anybody else? Let's see. Is that Alana's sister? Okay, that's awesome.
Well, thank you very much for introducing everyone and thank you, everyone, for coming in. Hi, Mrs. Wolf. I didn't want to forget saying hi to you also. Thank you for coming tonight and attending our meeting. We're going to take a brief break, our little intermission, so that if you need to take a bio break, we, you can do that. And if you want to stay for the rest of our meeting, we have lots of interesting things on the agenda. But this is also your opportunity to leave if you want to, and we won't be offended. Thank you.
Thank you.
S E A on the line? Amy? Okay. And you did say Mark is on the line for, from C V T A.
Hi, guys.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm looking forward to the school board breakfast this Saturday, the Alcosta CTA School Board Breakfast. We're gonna miss you once again, Dot. One of these days, you'll, you'll be able to make it. Uh, but every year, the breakfast has a theme and it usually revolves around collaboration, communication, and mutual respect. Uh, and that's what I'm gonna talk about tonight. Uh, about this time last year, we were getting ready to return to in-person learning. Uh, the prior summer, C V T A and C B U S D met regularly throughout the summer to ensure that we had an agreement that was understood, that was widely explained, had input from all stakeholders. And as a union, we were able to secure an M O U that got us through distance learning. This was done through collaboration and communication. We met with our membership. Uh, C V T A held a parent meeting to give our perspective to the community. And there were few surprises and little confusion. Um, immediately after the school year started, we started bargaining a hybrid go-back M O U, and we followed the same process. And it took five months of working together. Um, I checked the date, it was secured on, uh, January 31st before the vaccine. Um, and this, again, illustrates trust, not just trust in the district, but trust in union leadership, that we brought them something that, that we believed, um, was gonna keep us safe. And, um, we got this, again, through working together. Um, and we were one of the first districts in Alameda County to return to hybrid, and we did keep everyone safe. The reason why we were able to secure these things was through collaboration, trusting intentions, and communicating. Um, our leadership is holding site meetings in anticipation of bargaining this year. Uh, to us, site, the ideas that are being raised have the interest of our students as the center of everything. Our teachers want the resources to do their job. They wanna work with administration so our students are successful. In visiting sites and in follow-up discussions, there are some things that are setting us in a direction that we do not want to go in. If things are not communicated to staff, if our teachers here have changes, especially those that involve safety, for the first time at a board meeting, this creates confusion, and confusion leads to distrust. The reason why we were so successful at reaching agreements during the most difficult bargaining ever is because we communicated and collaborated and trusted intentions. Communication is key, and those folks that are directly affected should have the opportunities to find out of any changes and to ask questions and to be informed. In addition, in the area of mutual respect, we need site administration and D O staff to understand that when we ask for things that we need to serve our students, we need responses. I was forwarded several emails dating back to October, asking for math resources for special education students. These emails, five, four, five months, uh, they have not received a reply. How should our special ed teachers think about communication and mutual respect? Um, at Canyon, the English Language Program made a huge shift from a sheltered program to a mainstream program. This was done without teacher involvement. Um, they don't support it, they believe that the old program is better. Our D O teachers have had three meetings now, uh, dating back to the fall, and they are asking for training, and they're asking for resources, they're asking for help, they can serve students. They had their third meeting today, and again, it's really not going anywhere. Um, so, how can we work together when we are asking for things for our students, and the reply is just like nonexistent? Um, we incorporated our psychologist into our union last year. C V T A and C B U S D have a long tradition of standing meetings with administrators. We wanna meet together so we could solve things before they get unruly, before they get big. Um, and we have one scheduled for this Friday. Um, and a D O staff member emailed, um, the site representatives and questioned the legitimacy of the site representative. Do they really represent the union? And then on top of that, a D O staff member actually called a site representative, questioning whether she really represented her colleagues. Um, so this questions the legitimacy of our union, and this also really throws just a long tradition of working together really on its ear. Um, so these three examples do not illustrate collaboration, mutual respect, or trust. Uh, we need to support and trust each other, and we need to communicate with each other, and we need to understand that our goal is exactly the same, to serve students through difficult times. Um, you guys know me, I'm all about grace, I'm all about understanding. Um, but I'm also representing amazing teachers who need help to serve their students, and they are not receiving responses. Um, so these trends have me concerned, I do not wanna go in this direction. Um, we've done great together, we've done very well together when we work, uh, with these themes, so we gotta fix it. Uh, so thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you guys and fixing these problems. Have a good evening, and I'll see four of you on Saturday morning, bright and early. Bye, guys.
Bye, Mark, thank you. All right, I believe we have one public comment for a non-agendized item. All right, Dan, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Dan Zaretska, I have two students at Creekside Middle School. The board members, Jennifer, Michael, Gary, Dolly, Lavender, and Dot. I'd like to comment on the district's adoption of a contract with liberated ethnic studies model curriculum. The L E S M C uses divisive partisanism to further divide and separate rather than use our collective experiences, strengths, and hope. Ethnic studies, when taught constructively, can build empathy and understanding while combating racism. Unfortunately, the ethnic studies that is taught in this curriculum that you voted for pits students against each other by binarily defining them as victims or oppressors based solely on the color of their skin. It perpetuates the imperialist colonial ideas that the curriculum, curriculum purports to dismantle. It decidedly correlates a mandatory negative experience for all Black, Chicanx, Latinx, Asian, and American Indian children at a time when we are celebrating our diversity and uplifting historical minorities. The district's website states, "C V U S D is committed to the success of all students regardless of their national origin, ethnicity, religion, physical or mental ability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity or expression, or economic status." I asked the board, "How does the support and implementation of a hateful curriculum that shames children based on the color of their skin, their gender identity, the gender identity of the student's gestational parent and non-birthing parent, the geographic area of their ancestors immigrated from, or the religion their family practices regardless of the content of that child's character, support the district's safe haven policy? Teachers, please refuse to teach our children the district's new hate." Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any changes? No.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Oh, second. Thank you, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Lavender and Jenny.
I just have a couple of things, I just, um, National Women's History Month resolution. I just wanna read the first section because I feel that it's very powerful. Recognition that women of every race and ethnic background have contributed and continue to contribute to our country's triumph and accomplishment in countless ways. This is just one of the ways that we continue to celebrate our diversity and the contributions of women regardless of their national origin. And then, secondly, I just wanna say, I'm really excited to see the new course, Digital Seditionship and Intro to Data Science. I think it's really gonna be helpful for our students.
Thank you, Lavender. Jenny?
That's so funny, cuz I was just about to ask about Intro to Data Science. Um, so as I'm looking, um, at this, I just was wondering, it says it's gonna be proposed at Castro Valley High School for the 22, 23 school year, does that mean it's gonna be happening next year? And if so, like, how do students sign up for that when the course selections were turned in already?
So, in terms of signup, I have to actually defer to the site administration to get details in terms of that. But in terms of offering next year, yes, if there's sufficient interest, then the course would be offered. And as, as it stated in the, uh, course description, this would be a new option, uh, for mathematics that's really exciting, um, and I think matches that the needs, uh, currently, especially for, for students that is they're entering the, the workforce in, in college.
Okay, and it's like, it's different than the A P Stats and Probability and Stats that's, um, currently being taught?
Yeah, so there is some, my understanding is there is some statistics, um, in the data science course, so there is some overlap. Um, but the new data science course goes much deeper on the data piece, data analysis, quantifying data, et cetera. I'm not a math teacher, so I won't try to go too far, cuz I'll expose my, my weaknesses there, but... Oh yeah, Nick, you're, you're up. No, I'm kidding. Mr. McMaster was a math teacher, so I'm sure he, he could have, but, um, it, it really is, goes deeper on the data side, um, and not just the statistical analysis side.
Okay, thank you, I'm super excited about it, cuz I'm taking, I signed up for A P Stats, but if this is something that interests me, I might switch to this.
Very cool. All right, is there any further discussion or other questions? All right, Jenny, your preferential, I'm sorry, Jennifer, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will say yes, so the consent agenda is approved 5-0. All right, moving on to reports, discussion, and action items. The first item is the progress, path-to-progress rainbow pathways.
Excellent. Can you hear me? We're good, okay. Well, good evening, it's a privilege to stand here in front of you. Uh, I promise to be brief, because I get to introduce one of our shining stars in our district. So, um, reusing the word privilege, I do have the privilege to introduce our coordinator of behavioral health, Marion Meadows, who has been instrumental, uh, and continues to be instrumental in designing systems that, uh, support, uh, systems that strengthen the student experience uh, for students within our school district. And so, um, one of the things that I think is, where she's very deserving of praise, is she is always masterful at empowering students and ensuring that student, student, uh, voice is a, a core component of the, the, uh, projects we take on. And, um, that, I think, enables, enables us to, to really deliver. So tonight, uh, Marion is going to present to you a number of efforts, present to us a number of efforts, uh, that have been and will continue to be undertaken to support our LGBTQ plus students. And she's also gonna ask the board to take some action on one of those efforts. So, Ms. Meadows, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone, hopefully you can hear me. Again, my name is Marion Meadows, my pronouns are she and her. And I also wore pink today for Pink Out at the high school, so I had to represent for Castro Valley High. Make sure that I'm on, on, uh, Spirit Week message. So thank you again for the opportunity to bring this really important effort to you tonight. And I'm gonna, um, start by grounding us in what our strategic plan is as a district and as, uh, as a board. So we'll move on to the next slide. Well, I get to do it. All right. Um, so, uh, again, this is our strategic plan, this is what our board and our district is guided by. And in this case, we're gonna point to specifically around the goals for social emotional, um, social emotional goals for every student who feels safe and valued in our schools. It's a really important piece that we continue to bring back to the board as a reminder for, the charge for our work as we move forward. Also, our work is grounded in California Education Code. In particular, this section of the law is around anti-bias work, it's section 201, uh, A through F. And as a reminder, these pieces, um, to paraphrase, have to do with all pupils having the right to fully, uh, participate in the educational process free from discrimination and harassment. That our schools have an obligation to combat racism, sexism, and other forms of bias. And that there's a need to prevent and respond to acts of hate violence and bias-related incidences that are occurring in our schools, and also a need to teach and inform pupils in our schools about their rights. And the, these pieces are what guide us in our work, both from a moral and ethical piece, but also because we have to be in legal compliance with this part of the law. Moving forward, just a reminder of the work that the board has already done, and I wanna point out some really important, um, historical board actions from this board that include resolution on June as Pride Month, the flying of rainbow flags at our schools, support for the anti-bias and anti-racism curriculum, rest code policy changes, and restorative practices. This is a lot of work on behalf of our district, done by this board. And where that manifests, as, as you're familiar with, but as a reminder, is our social emotional learning curriculum that's TK 12, and even in parts of our, um, adult school. Positive behavior interventions and supports, that's a P B I S. Our counseling and social work supports, our ongoing anti-bias and anti-racism work, and our wellness council with a renewed focus on our LGBTQ plus community as well as building out more of the curriculum around our work. And this is a really important piece to, um, reinforce because it speaks to these pieces being delivered to every student on our camp. This is tier one, right, we talk about the tiers. Tier one means that every student receives these. And that is a huge undertaking for any district. But in particular, this board has been really committed to making sure that all students receive this, this really important, all of these pieces, but this important foundation for how to be a community that's equitable and inclusive of everyone. So moving forward, just a quick, quick reminder of the community that we're discussing tonight. Again, LGBTQ plus, you can see the acronym, just for, I think someone mentioned a lot of acronyms in school. This is a really important one because it involves also this plus at the end, and it, it's a symbol of how inclusive the community is. And it, you can see some examples there. It is an ever-evolving and creative community that, um, we continue to, to need to learn about, right? And often our, most often, our youth are way ahead of us. So always going to them, um, to explain who they are and who they are becoming is of critical importance as we continue this work. We're gonna start with a little bit of, um, just a couple of slides on statistics that I think are important to ground our conversation in. There's an organization, um, it's an advocacy organization called Glisten. And it does a, they do a national school climate survey. And in 1920, there's just some of the important stats that came out of their survey. Fifty-nine point one percent of LGBTQ plus students felt unsafe at school because of their sexual orientation. Forty-two point five percent because of their gender expression, thirty-seven point four percent because of their gender. And of special note here is that transgender and gender non-conforming students face the most hostile school in, school climates of all LGBT students. And a third of all LGBT students heard anti-transgender remarks frequently. So this is a really important group of students we need to be thinking about. Some statewide data we wanted to bring to you tonight. Um, you have undoubtedly, as a, as a board, heard about our California Healthy Kids Survey. This is, this is survey data that we bring regularly. And specifically in the statewide data, we see that LGBTQ youth are at elevated risk for bullying and violence victimization, mental health problems, drug and alcohol use, and exhibiting poor performance in school. And I wanna make a note that this doesn't speak to the pathology of LGBTQ plus students, it speaks to an environment that is not safe. Right, and that's our job as a board, as adults, as community members, is to make sure that our, well, our entire community and, including the schools, are safe for students, for all students. More statistics show that thirty percent, um, almost, about thirty percentage points more like students are more likely than non-LGBTQ youth to experience harassment and bullying at school. Thirty to forty percent percentage points more likely to exhibit chronic sadness, more likely to use, uh, to smoke cigarettes, binge drink, have been drunk or high at school. This is all data that comes out of the CHICS survey that we have every year. And I, again, of important note, I think this is a huge one for us, is that, us as adults, is that, um, LGBTQ youth receive substantially fewer social supports from teachers and peers at schools than their counterparts who do not identify as LGBTQ. So again, those are, those are social supports from adults. And that, again, speaks to our responsibility as adults in creating these safe environments. So there's a good, um, good note moving forward on the CHICS data is that there's a module that we can add, that we, we haven't had, but we can add it, that will give us much better data on our LGBTQ students and their needs. So that's a module that we're, we're gonna be adding to our next, um, the next, I think, distribution of, of our California Healthy Kids Survey, so there'll be a lot more data coming this way that we can bring to the board. And as it relates to local data for our district, um, it's just a special note that we don't ask students to identify. So we can't speak to what LGBTQ plus students think about specifics because we don't force them to come forward and say how they identify. So we're piecing together other sources of information and data to be able to, to paint a picture that speaks more to what the needs are. Um, and then how, as, as, again, the adults, as we, how we can, uh, impact the environment to make it safer for students, to be able to just be who they are, be authentically who they are. So there's more, more data to come, for sure. Okay, so a word about visibility, and then we're gonna move into a partnership. Um, it, this is an important piece to put forward as it relates to where we're moving as a, as a district, but also as a community and a society, right? So visibility in LGBTQ community is, has historically changed in a lot of ways, but there's still places in which we're kinda stuck. So visibility, historically speaking, visibility meant survival. If you could show up as part of a community, there was safety in numbers, right? So being able to be seen together is really important in the community. We've moved into, um, also into an area of tolerance, where you can, you can be who you are and people will basically tolerate you, right? Um, moving forward, we, we have gotten a little bit more into acceptance, which is like, we love you no matter what, or we support you no matter what. But we wanna move into a place where visibility equals affirmation, right? That it's not just about, hey, everyone can hang out and get along, but actually, who you are brings a very special value to the community. And, and we need you, who you are, we need that to be a whole community. So I'll point us back to our, um, the beginning with our strategic plan. That means that all students feel safe and valued. Feeling safe isn't enough, right? Our students and our community need to feel valued. And that's, that's where we're moving with, with all of the work that this board has done and that we're gonna bring to you tonight. Okay, now, we get to talk about a great partner, which I'm really excited about. This is a great part of the presentation. That we will move into the, um, the action items. So our, our project highlight tonight are, are, um, with a partner Castro Valley Pride. And it's reading, the creation of rainbow pathways on each campus. So this is a really exciting project. So Castro Valley Pride is a local community partner, longtime community partner, with spearheaded fundraising efforts to create large rainbow pathways in the design of the progress flag, and we're gonna discuss that in a minute, on each campus. The goal of these pathways is to increase visibility of the community on each school, i- i- in each school. But more than just a beautiful piece of art, it's meant to create a safe space for students to gather, right? To be around each other, to be seen as part of the community, along with allies. And we, we talk about community members and allies and the people who are still learning, right? We include them too, cuz we're all still learning, and that, that is what a community is, right? So in addition to these beautiful pieces of art, where, where students and community members can gather and be together, we're also working to create additional social emotional learning lessons um, to, to integrate the pathways into our larger S C L and anti-bias, anti-racist curriculum. That's an important piece that we didn't want it to just be sort of a, again, something to look at, but it needed to be integrated into the work that we've already been doing as it relates to anti-bias and anti-discrimination. So a quick note on the progress flag, this is what it looks like. You can see, again, that, the, the colors represent certain, certain values of the community. And again, this is LGBTQ plus, but we talk about allies, we talk about people still learning, and that the, the flag is there for everyone, right? The rainbow's there for everyone. Including, um, these are, um, recent additions, including the black and brown being part of people, representing people of color. The trans community are, um, the pink and blue and white, and the circle, uh, represents the intersex community. So it's a, it's a really beautiful design. A couple other pieces, just to flesh out, the, the pathways have to do with what we're creating alongside this project and with our larger goals around support and build-out is a, a teacher work group. So many of you are familiar, when we did the anti-racism, um, and anti-bias curriculum, let, when those lessons were built out, they were built out by teacher work groups. And so this is the same model, teachers are coming together to create the lessons, to pair with the rainbow pathways, to update the website and resources, to work on professional development and awareness campaigns. Looking at that data and, and analysis for prevention and intervention, that's a really important piece that we wanna work, work more closely on. Again, creating community connections, student leadership, and continued partnership with Mosaic, who I know you've heard about, and the Anti-Defamation League, whose curriculum we've worked, uh, worked from for our anti-bias, anti-racism curriculum. We wanna continue those partnerships with this work group. I'll actually update this slide, it's not sixteen, it's twenty-one teachers now. Twenty-one teachers are committed to this work, which is... which is really exciting. One last partner that we're excited to talk to you about tonight is our Castro Valley Adult and Career Education, C-Base. We love them, we know they're amazing. They have a really strong foundation in parent education. We're working with them to bring parent circles to, they offer a lot of parent education offerings. We want to use the community circle model to offer parents a circle opportunity for focus on the unique needs of the LGBTQ+ parent community, parents and children. So you can see there are multiple pieces of this. It's something in the middle. It's kind of the flag is the walkways or the hub of the wheel. And then we're building out all these other pieces because that's how diverse the community is. All right, so we put some resources in, in the end. If you want to learn more, these are the great resources out there. Again, Castro Valley Pride, GLSEN is the national, they do the National School Climate Survey. The Trevor Project is an incredible mental health and student advocacy organization. Gender Spectrum, I know we've worked with before in our district. The county has great resources. And again, Mosaic is up there, too. These are, might be familiar resources as we move forward. So we want to say thank you for the time tonight. And also to end up saying that the staff recommends that the Castro Valley Board of Education approves the LGBTQ+ Path to Progress Rainbow Pathways at all Castro Valley Unified Schools. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your great presentation. Questions?
I just have a simple question. The rainbow pathways, are these painted or like a durable paint or something like that?
Yes, yes, they would be painted. And at some of the bigger schools, there's an opportunity to do more than just one pathway. Schools are looking at stairways and stripes on the thing. Yeah, yes, but durable, that's the key word. Yeah, thank you.
Mike?
And it sounds like there'll be a conversation with each school site about the best location, but I'm assuming there's an intention that they are in visible places, correct?
Right.
Annie?
I had a question about one of your slides with the statewide Healthy Kids Survey. On one of the last points, it says that LGBTQ+ youth are, they receive fewer social supports from teachers and peers at school. I was wondering if you happen to know why that is or how that is?
That's a good question. So I didn't put the statistic in the presentation, but there are statistics out there that say that there are staff that are, it's up to forty percent of LGBTQ+ staff are not out at work in the workplace. There's a lot of research about safety in the workplace, right? And that is a national statistic that doesn't necessarily apply to Castro Valley Unified, but I think that there is a need for that. Again, back to that visibility slide that I'm talking about is that safety comes when we are able to present ourselves as we are. And I'll give you a really easy example. When we introduce ourselves with our pronouns, we're just saying what our pronouns are. But to another student, that makes them feel seen. We're saying, I see you, I see the pronouns are important to you. I'm going to say my pronouns to put myself out there first so that you can feel safe. So that, it's a very basic example, but something that we need to continue to work on, right? Is as, making sure that we're seen as safe adults in that way. That part's really important. Thank you for that question.
And I appreciate that reminder. You know, I have it in my email signature, but I often forget to do that. And I think making that a natural thing is part of the affirmation part of our progress. Mike?
So I appreciate tonight, what we're looking at, you're giving us an overview of sort of the climate in California. I would be interested to know what it's like more locally at our high school in particular. And I appreciate that this is connected to, I think, a really important symbolic thing that we're doing in our schools. But what is it like? So you talked about tier one support, right? So that's the entire school. Would you say that our high school is a safer place for someone in the LGBTQ+ community than maybe twenty years ago? Like, what does it look like? What does, how do you provide support for a student who has questions about their identity, wants to find an ally, is dealing with bullying? If you could just kind of walk us through some of those type of interventions and support?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So the tier one that you mentioned means that we're creating a safe environment for every student, no matter who they are or who they turn into, right? Developmentally, students, especially, well, any developmental level, but when we get into middle and high school, there's so much identity development that happens. And so the baseline has to be really safe, right? For students to be able to experiment and figure it out, who they are and have safe adults. So like you said, that's tier one. When it comes to tier two, we have an ongoing system that exists at all of our schools that involves being able to identify students from an outreach perspective. Their students need to advocate for themselves that as adults, we need to be two steps ahead of them, watching and seeing what they need ahead of time, anticipating what they need. And so at each school, we have processes that bring a multidisciplinary team together, the counselors, administrators, and teachers, and social workers, to continue to pre-identify students that might need some support in that way, to get them to the right support. It doesn't necessarily mean mental health support. Often, it doesn't. It actually means they need social support. They need a club, they need, again, a safe peer. They need to figure out what their interests are so that they can kind of develop that sense of identity. So we want to be careful not to pathologize a student that is, it's not a pathology, there's nothing wrong with them, right? It's that we haven't figured out how to offer all the things that students need. And again, that's why our board, you have all worked so hard to do that. So we continue to do that work. When it comes to needing up like tier two, tier three, when we're moving up the chain, you know, every school has a social worker, every school has counselors. We have, again, partners, partnerships with outside agencies for support. We also have partnerships with specialty providers in the community that serve all different kinds of communities. But in particular, we do have partners and resources that exist for LGBTQ+ students. And also, I think an important piece of it is thinking about hiring and making sure that the people we bring into our district represent our community, all of our communities, language communities, you know, racial, ethnic, every kind of diversity that makes this place so special. That's our job, is to bring adults into this community that represent the students. So it's definitely multi-tiered, literally. But we have the structure there to support students, whatever, whatever they want to turn into or whoever they are. Yeah, thank you for the question.
Dolly?
I just wanted to say that, you know, this work for LGBTQ+ kids is very important. I've worked in a counseling and rich class this district and my current district. And because of society's, you know, some discrimination bias towards LGBTQ kids or even their specific families maybe not being accepting, you know, they sometimes can have a lot of trouble, particularly if their family does not accept that. And so I know we have the resources here and they have it in other schools in Alameda County. But here, I know, you know, this first, you know, Castro Valley Pride, you know, that was associated with our high school. And I think Castro Valley has really tried to do a great job in making the community feel welcome and, you know, moving up the tier side. And I think these, you know, the sidewalks are just one more thing that we could do, the lessons, that tier one where every kid's going to hear that. I think that's fantastic.
That's right. Thank you.
It's Meadows, who's doing an absolutely amazing job. This is why social-emotional learning and those anti-bias lessons are important to be done everywhere, by everybody, so that kids can hear and see that we're here for them. You just spoke about when they don't feel safe and they don't have that opportunity, it's very difficult to focus on academic. And that's, I think, kudos to you and your team for creating them, for all the training you've provided and you continue to provide. Because, and I have to say, kudos to you guys for, when I say to people, we have eleven social workers in our school districts, people's jaws drop because it is unheard of. It's unheard of. So that's why we are able to do the kind of work we do. So thank you.
Amy, we have some, five requests to speak. So let's bring them in. Please. All right, Annika. Hi, Annika.
Good evening. Thank you, Dot. Can you hear me? Great. So good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Annika Gull. My pronouns are she and her. And thank you for allowing me to share my perspective. I'm here to express my support for the installation of rainbow pathways at each of the district's schools. I support this because these pathways will add a clear and bright expression of support for children and families who belong to the large community of LGBTQ folks in the Castro Valley School District. It will also serve as a Bay Area-wide example of CVUSD leadership on this front. And this matters because there are still many, too many of our neighbors in this village of sixty thousand who through their daily actions and words signal that the rights and the lives of those of us who are gay matter less than the rights and lives of those of us who are straight and people who dismiss homophobic and transphobic jokes and teasing and bullying as no big deal, just get over it. And community members who thoughtlessly or deliberately indicated defying their expectations of norms justifies others having to live in an unsafe environment. Our children are exposed to those messages and as has been noted earlier, they trickle into our school hallways. And our children hear them. To survive that destructive noise and to help them thrive as humans who respect and support their fellow humans, it is important for all children, gay, straight, and all genders, to learn and understand that in the Castro Valley School District, no matter your gender, your gender expression or sexual preference, you are not only safe, but celebrated. And adding these visual rainbow pathways in their permanent and year-round format will serve as a powerful statement that in this district, the expectation is for inclusion, joy, safety, and support extended to all. I'd like to note that although these pathways use symbols, they are much more than symbolism. This program opens a real pathway that can lead a student to finding support they would not otherwise find. And that is a vital message to put out there. So Dot and Gary and Lavender, Dolly, Michael, Jennifer, and Parveen, I hope and I expect you plan to support and implement this project. And I really thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Annika. Next up, we have Austin. Hi, Austin, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Superintendent, Board President, and Trustees. My name's Austin Brechner. My pronouns are he, his, and him. I want to thank Annika from our Castro Valley Pride team. It's my honor to be here as well on behalf of Castro Valley Pride, an LGBTQ+ organization that's been doing work within our community for over a decade. Tonight, you will undoubtedly move forward with the installation of these rainbow pathways at each of our school sites. I want to take a moment to thank the students, especially Carissa and Rebecca, who helped bring this item to fruition, and for the community who helped us raise over $3,000 to ensure that no public funds will be required for this project. Last week, I joined a site visit at the high school with a group of students, many of which are LGBTQ. We used paper maps to identify sites that they felt these pathways were most meaningful. And by the end of our short visit, nearly every inch of their paper map was covered in pen marks. It looked like a game of connect the dots. Why is this? It's because not every student feels safe and valued in our schools. As staff said, not every student feels safe and valued in our schools. The district has an obligation to make sure that our students feel safe and valued in our schools. And I wholeheartedly believe that one of the easiest things and most important and impactful things the district can do is reexamine the days of diversity program and reinstitute it. If not reinstitute it, at least have a conversation about how effective this season of service, period of peace effort is. In my opinion, we replaced days of diversity, which was a robust, week-long program centered solely around celebrating diversity that had 100% participation. That program was replaced with an optional lunchtime program that students can skip in lieu of an off-site lunch with their friends. I think back to high school, me, and I'd be going to Starbucks. We replaced a program that gave students the opportunity to hear about important and meaningful topics that celebrate our diversity, like LGBTQ rights and how it connects to the modern-day civil rights movement, about pronouns and bullying prevention, about Palestinian culture. We had an opportunity for a student with cerebral palsy, her name was Shelley, that was at Castro Valley High School, to talk about what it was like to go through our halls. We had Vietnam veterans who talked about their experience and about PTSD. We had folks who talked about the rodeo, about their Jewish faith, their Muslim faith. We had people talk about sexual assault prevention and their experience going through that terrible trauma, about gang-based gun violence. We had former Tuskegee Airmen. We had elders at Bearwood Court that talked about their experience, Holocaust survivors and Japanese internment survivors. I want to thank you for today, but I also want you to acknowledge and recognize that you have an obligation to do more. Thank you so much.
You, Austin. Carrie, welcome to our meeting.
Good evening, Dot and Superintendent Amadi and school board members. Nice to see so many friendly faces tonight. My pronouns are she and her. I'm a former CVUSD student, currently live in Castro Valley. I'm a former CVUSD employee and volunteered as a co-advisor of Canyon's GSA Student Club with the wonderful Wendy Franklin Willis. I've been an active participant and fundraiser for CV Pride for the past ten years. So you can say I have a little skin in the game here. Rainbow pathways with the progress pride flag designed at each campus is an important visual reminder to all students, staff, families, and the entire community that LGBTQ+ folks should live their lives authentically without fear from harm or harassment or bullying due to their sexual orientation or gender or gender identity or gender expression. Campuses are safe and inclusive environments where everyone belongs, where effective school, safe school policies are created and enforced, and ongoing training and education opportunities for students and staff to keep LGBTQ+ folks safe. While working with LGBTQ+ youth, it was very clear to me that the youth know who they are, absolutely, unequivocally. And many have expressed support for one another even when some adults, and in some cases, their families, did not support them. Schools should be a safe haven for all youth, but in particular LGBTQ+ youth who might not receive support outside of school. So many youth have thanked members of CV Pride for sponsoring annual events, including the family-friendly CV Pride Celebration and Festival held in the Castro Valley High School parking lot during the summer. Rainbow pathways in CV schools is crucial to increasing the visibility of the LGBTQ+ community. As the rainbow mural on the wall at Canyon Middle School quotes Dr. Seuss, "Be who you are and say what you feel because those that mind don't matter and those who matter don't mind." Thank you to everyone involved in this important endeavor, and I strongly encourage the school board to approve this initiative and continue partnership with CV Pride. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.[1742.88] Our next speaker is Rebecca Ireland. Welcome to our meeting.
Hello. I'm Rebecca, a current junior, a current queer student at Castro Valley High School. Rainbow Crosswalks are a project that my friend Carissa and I presented to Castro Valley Pride, as Austin said. We have been working with the High School Wellness Center to get this to you and hopefully all CVUSD campuses. We believe that this symbol of acceptance and pride is something that will make all CVUSD students and families feel more welcome, safe, and accepted on campus. One of the places we have considered on the CVHS campus is a visible location by the football stadium. This is a vital location in light of the legislation restricting trans students from playing on sports teams. Showing our pride on campuses is just one step we can take to demonstrate inclusivity and dedication to stop othering and ensure that LGBTQ+ students are affirmed. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. And our last speaker is Bill. Welcome to our meeting, Bill.
Good evening. I haven't spoken in a while. So I just wanted to say that I'm really glad to hear there's a program like this. I kind of echo a little bit of this comment from our union representative's statement that often it seems like we're learning about all these things during board meetings, because I have actually never heard about this. And we've been in the school district now going on our fourth year. So I'm actually really curious to know that this has been going on for a while, as I am an LGBTQ member of the community and a parent. So I just wanted to put that out there. I hope that outreach to the community will improve so that others who could benefit, or even from whom the program could benefit, are contacted. One thing I'm kind of curious about, I know that you guys won't be able to respond directly, but I just want to put it out there. I'm kind of concerned to hear that although the survey results are rather concerning, that we're not really connecting that to the actual experience of students in our community, and for whatever reason that may be. So it makes me wonder, are we really getting feedback from students, parents, staff, member in our community who are affected by these issues to understand really what their concerns and their needs are? I mean, it's great to work from the survey, but if we're basing our information on stuff that we can't connect to our community, are we really addressing the need? That's just a question I want to put out there. Another thing I heard in the presentation that kind of got my attention is the, I don't know if it was intended this way, but the way I heard it was that, you know, visibility of those in the community really matters to people. And to that, I completely agree. As a kid growing up, we didn't really have that. So the idea that staff or teachers who were LGBTQ coming out or being visible sounds like a great thing, but I think that what we may be missing is that as adults, we also face these issues. And in an education environment, being out can often be sexualized and become a problem for employment and other matters. So I just want to be careful that we don't push people into thinking that they need to take actions like that without understanding that there may be ramifications to those actions. And as much as I definitely support the notion that people should be out and visible, there are ramifications that we need to be aware that they may face. And that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right, folks, this is an action item. Vice President Whitaker?
I would like to move approval of the LGBTQ+ Path and Progress Rainbow Pathways at all Castro Valley Unified School District sites.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that.
Thank you, Dolly. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Vice President Whitaker?
I'm sorry, this is going to be so long-winded, but I have so much to say in this area. First of all, you know, when we think about the history of what our district has done, where we are today, and where we still need to go, I first want to commend the students, the teachers, Castro Valley Pride, our staff, for really putting together a thoughtful presentation and really looking at the safety, not only physically, but emotionally of our students. I mean, the things that we're doing, Ms. Meadows, that you said, you know, it's going to be in our curriculum, anti-bias training. It's the pathways that we're putting together. It's the way we are creating the Wellness Center. It's what we're going to be doing at the Adult and Career Center. And what this really shows in our district is this is part of greater efforts across our district to create a community, create a welcoming learning environment where all students feel that they belong regardless of their gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, religious, or lack thereof, their ethnicity, national origin, ability, or socioeconomic status. What really matters is people feel that they belong and they're safe, and there's teachings. And this also, our professional development includes this as well for our teachers of how to be anti-bias themselves. I'm looking forward to more of that. But I just want to say some more statistics that really hit home with me. Many of my family and close friends are LGBTQ+. And suicides, just for students in general, is the third-leading cause of death. And 42% of our LGBTQ+ nationally, Trevor Project, seriously considered suicide in the past year. And 80% of them said that the pandemic made it worse. And the reason why it made it worse is because higher suicidal thoughts in the LGBTQ+ community are most likely due to bias and discrimination, family rejection, and other stressors based on how they're treated because of microaggressions and just because of who they are. And that's not fair. And we need to create safe spaces regardless of what people are facing, because of who they are. As we move forward and we look towards what we can do next, you know, we talk about affirmation. We're thinking about the different spaces that LGBTQ+ kids are in and their environments and their social, emotional health. Another statistic that really struck with me is that 50% of LGBTQ+ Americans say that they've been insulted or abused while playing, watching, or talking about sports. And so I know when we're looking at the Wellness Center and we're looking at how we train our teachers, and we're looking at how do we create safe spaces, that's something that sticks with me. We want to create, sports is a lovely thing for our community members to partake in. It builds community. But unless it's equal, and unless it includes everyone, we're not there yet. And I know we're doing a lot of other work, and I want to commend district staff. I want to commend our 21 teachers who are working on this important work. But I do want to recognize, in anything that we do, we're still facing a lot of folks who don't think we're doing the right thing. We're still facing, with progress comes pushback. And I just want to say how proud I am of our district for moving us forward, and then still recognizing that creating safe spaces for kids means psychological safety in a lot of different ways that we may not know yet. So I'm hoping we continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Lavender. So we have a motion and a second. Yes, Mike?
Just one comment, if that's okay. I was really heartened to hear about the collaboration with the Mosaic Project and also using curriculum from the ADL. I think that's really important. They recognize the organization you go to to think about anti-hate work. When I am reflecting on the presentation here, and Lavender, thank you for all of your comments in centering the importance of this. So I don't want to take that from you. I just, I was hoping that maybe we can better understand the current need of our students, and I don't know what is a safe way of doing that. So we can just evaluate going forward. I know we have that survey that we looked at there, but in the way, to the extent that we can better understand the needs of our students so that we can build out the programming in a way that's appropriate in 2022 and beyond. But thank you.
So, yeah, I think just a couple of things, and I'm sure Ms. Meadows can, you know, come back up and add to this. But I, you know, just like you heard, we don't actually ask students to tell us. So the best way is for, really for us to do the work that we are doing on an ongoing basis. And that's why the Tier One needs to be everywhere and not just, okay, we're going to do this in such-and-such class by one person. It should be all of us, everybody trained, everybody doing the social, emotional lessons. But one of the reasons we did, most districts don't use the module that we now, this year, and we've never done it. So the data that you have, so this year, we're actually going to use that module. To be honest, as much as we hate surveys that are like that, in this case, it's almost like it's a lot easier for students to actually share with us what their experience is. Because we don't just go and ask them, because that would make it unsafe. But I don't know, either one of you, that's why I wanted to kind of, just before you come up, Mr. Trolley was asking about like how this is. We've done a lot of work, but I think when you're in elementary school, so that was a good point. I think a lot of what we're talking about happens in middle and high school. Even though we do this work in elementary school, there isn't a whole lot we've put out there. And now we just started, I think Ms. Kairah actually can tell you a little bit about our website that we're really developing and putting more information on so that people are aware. But I want to commend you on actually working with adult school to do the parent circles. That's a really important piece that we need to get the message out to all families.
Did you want?
Sorry, I just wanted to comment because the California Healthy Kids Survey is a climate survey. So it's anonymous. And there, on the core module, which we've used historically, there's three questions about gender, gender identity, sexual orientation. And then there's broad climate-based questions, and then that's the data we get. So the module we've added has approximately 45 additional questions that hone in on specific types of slurs, specific types of bullying that have been spotted in communities. So it is going to give us, it's still anonymous, which we've discussed in this format, it should be. But we're going to get really, really descriptive data about the experiences of students and what they see on the campuses in light of this topic. So we're really, really excited about that addition and the information we will get.
Ms. Meadows, I want to also appreciate you highlighting all of the things that have happened in our district in the last several years. It's easy to sit back and congratulate ourselves, but it's also very important for us to always know that we can do better. So thank you for that. All right, are there any further comments? All right, Jenny, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will say yes. So the motion is approved to approve the LGBTQ Paths to Progress Rainbow Pathways. All right. Superintendent's update.
Thank you so much. Lot of good work. All right. My update. COVID-19 updates. So here are just a couple of pieces of information about vaccination. 81.8% of Alameda County fully vaccinated. 61% of 5- to 11-year-olds. So it just keeps going up. And 83% of vaccinated in Castro Valley. What we are hearing from our health officer that conditions are improving. Department of Public Health will be loosening restrictions related to masking indoors, but TK-12 indoor masking will remain the same for now. And this is indoor. Some of these changes, as they're happening, and I think one of the things we have to remember is that there is a lot, for example, as we look at how we actually trace and track, when we go to meetings and they actually tell us here is how you can, how it's changed, there isn't always a lot of time to see if that works for anybody. One thing that has really saved us is that this district has always followed the guidelines of the health officer instead of making our own rules. So we'll continue to communicate any changes to our schools. In the months ahead, what I, what we heard at our superintendent's meeting with Dr. Moss and Dr. Locke was that other changes to requirements are coming. Examples would be tracing and tracking are also expected. We asked about, like, moving forward, you know, spring, next year. Because, as you know, all of the funds that we have received and all of the things we've done this year really was following the guidelines, but also the funding that we receive from the federal government and the state as our funds, those are done. I mean, that's, it's not something that they continue, and that's because the expectation is that we just need to learn to do some things differently and live with this as it kind of, you know, the worst of it hopefully subsides. One of the things that we have to remember is some things are going to have to change forever. Right? For example, you know, before we would say, we always had the rule that if you have a fever and if you're ill, not come. But one of the things that has really saved us is just if you have symptoms, stay home. And that's moving forward, right? Some of the other things we have in place, ventilation, right? It should have always been like that, but now we haven't. So some of those things are there. Some of the practices that we always, you know, maybe we didn't think about so much, like washing your hands before, making sure you're, you know, just some of those practices need to continue. But I'm not seeing that next year we would be, you know, and what we heard is hopefully when things are getting better, that even indoor masking would change for children. So, but for now, that's what we have. But vaccination continues to be a priority. And I think if we can get more and more people vaccinated, obviously, we'll be in such a better place. This is our dashboard. Cases are declining. The first week, like, we had, I don't know, 81 days and the next day, and now we're seeing less cases, obviously. And that's what's happening around the state. We're very proud of having accomplished, and thank you, everybody here. Dr. Zamora was basically all over the place last week with antigen testing to make sure that happens, and we're doing everything right. Antigen tested ministers, 647. That's through our mobile clinic and Adobe. Or that's pretty cool. And then this is just a, you know, just sharing with you the antigen testing schedule for like 2:7 to 2:11. So you will see how it's moving from site to site. And remember, we used to have it every other week with PCR, and now it's every week. And then we've got the Adobe Center, 2:30 to 4:30, and 3:00 to 4:30 on Tuesdays, and then Thursdays. We don't have a lot of people coming to Adobe at all. So we'll see if we need to do something different, like not have as many days. So contact tracing and group testing. So if you, and this is the difference, sometimes we hear from families who say, well, it's done this way, but it's done this way, this way. You can actually do either one of these. Contact tracing means that masked or unmasked and vaccinated and unvaccinated students in the class will be identified based on where they were and provided individualized next steps. Students who have had no exposure to the positive person will not be notified. That's how we had been doing it throughout the school district. And then they, you know, the new way of doing that is group tracing, which means all of the students in the class, where there is one, will be notified and treated as a masked, unvaccinated exposure and will stay in school. But students are recommended to take an antigen test on day three or day five. So this really all depends on the situation. Depends on where it happens, depends on, you know, what, obviously, for group testing for high school and secondary school, makes a lot more sense. So I just wanted to share that if you see different things, it's because we're allowed to do either one of these based on the situation that happened. And then other district updates. Governor's budget proposal without what it means for CVUSD. Ms. Chan is going to cover tonight. Legislative updates and advocacy, if anybody wants to advocate. I know that Ms. Chan will also go over all of these, but really what we're, we need to be, our message needs to be clear, as you will see her presentation, increasing the base. And, you know, it has increased, but just even more. Less categorical funds and less plans. I can tell you, how many plans are we doing? Six, seven, nine plans? With every piece of funding that comes to us. It's also our conversation around really for stirs and purrs and declining enrollment remedy for upcoming years. When Ms. Chan talks about the budget, we'll talk about that cliff and what we need to be thinking about. and what we need to be thinking about. COVID moving forward and next year, what are we going to do? How are we going to have clarity around what needs to be done? And then of course, there's always other legislation that comes about that impacts education that we really need to be aware of. Upcoming, we do have, obviously, we're going to talk about this next time. I know we've talked about it, but we're going to actually get, bring you some more information in the contract for extended learning opportunity program. Extended transitional kindergarten is happening. And then dual language immersion, we've talked about that. It's exciting, twenty-two, twenty-three at Annoyed. And then Castro Valley Community Alliance meeting is February twenty-fourth at six to seven thirty PM. And we already sent invitation. I believe that's it. Any questions? I'll be happy to.
Sally and then Mike.
I just have a question about like, is the state doing anything about handing out more tests like they did after Christmas? Will that be happening spring break or things like that?
We haven't heard of them giving us any. But every family is now able to, I, I hope that everyone has done that. But we are not hearing that they're going to give us anymore. Okay. Masks have arrived, has, have been here. I want to say there was a comment, I think, about someone asking for masks. That should, should never be. And we don't believe that anybody who has asked does not have it. We actually have so many, we've said you can even have one every day.
Mike?
Yeah, just when we were looking at the dashboard, it seems like we were probably stabilizing with, when it comes to attendances and also not having to cover our classes with district staff. How are we doing in, in the subdepartment and just sort of student attendance generally?
For the, for the staff, we're doing really well. It's really calmed down quite a bit. And thanks for supporting the, our efforts here. It's really helped. We're also getting about two to three substitute applications per week since we started announcing. So we're really seeing that downturn come down. So thanks for your support on that.
That simplified application that you guys have.
Yeah.
And everyone's support. It's a team effort. It's.
I wanted to say that I think it's been a long, hard road. I don't think, it has been a long, hard road. And one of the challenges with a public health crisis such as this one is communication. And, and we saw that, right? A lot of things were confusing, coming from the CDC, coming from California Department of Public Health, from our Bay Area Public Health leaders. But for our district to remain consistent with what has been recommended by the state and by our county officials, I think has been very important because then there's no confusion. So I appreciate the fact that we've always stuck with what has been recommended by our public health leaders. So thank you and thank you for that presentation. Other questions? Okay, let's move on. Item nine C, CASP.
So the only thing more exciting than to do testing is to talk about testing results. So tonight, we're going to be sharing, actually, it is a fairly interesting presentation in that this was a testing year that was unlike any other testing year we've had before. As you know, with the CASP, it's the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress is the testing system that the state of California uses in all of its schools. The CASP is made up of four parts. I won't go through each one in detail, other than to just show you what those four parts are. Not all of the parts were administered this year, however. This year, the new data were released in January from our CASP, from our Smarter Balanced Assessment that we were able to provide in two thousand twenty, the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. As you may recall, in the nineteen-twenty school year, we were not, the state did not issue that test. Many districts were not able to administer the Smarter Balanced Assessment or chose not to and used local assessments. We did use a local assessment for eleventh, for, for eleventh and eighth grade math. But in, at all other areas, we were able to use the Smarter Balanced Assessment. The CAST test, which is the science test, was not administered last year, but we do anticipate administering the CAST test this year. So as I was saying before, we will be talking today about the ELA and math performance on the Smarter Balanced Assessments. We're also going to talk about DNF data, which is interesting this year. We don't necessarily usually join the two, but I'll explain why as we go through because it is a measurement of engagement. As we're looking at the whole picture, there's more than one measurement that we want to look at in terms of academic progress and starting to get some of this data in place. Typically, we would share dashboard data with you during this presentation. However, the state has not launched the dashboard for this year yet. It's unclear if they're going to at a later point, but at least for the time being, it's not currently been launched. So Smarter Balanced Assessment data over time. As you know, we were expecting a significant dip in performance. For the ELA overall, we had a fairly high participation rate, actually. The percent that meets and exceeds overall for our district on ELA during the two thousand twenty-one school year actually was comparable to what we've seen in years past, actually increased a small amount. We're not sure if that'll continue. After all, this will be the second year that we're seeing the impact from COVID. However, we were pleasantly surprised to see performance did not decrease in ELA overall. If the math, on the math assessment, we did see a decline, actually erasing most of the gains that we've made over the past five years in mathematics and bringing us pretty much back to the two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen years. But again, even though we did see a decrease, it wasn't kind of the catastrophic decrease in performance. Now, it's unclear if part of this could be because of some students not being able to participate. And perhaps the students who were most impacted did not participate. But again, this is a measurement of elementary math. And so this, we actually had a fairly high participation rate. Compared to the state and county averages, Castro Valley continues to outperform in both math and ELA. Both the state and county averages, the state averaged by a significant margin in both areas and a fairly wide margin also compared to the county. I showed this report just to illustrate what I was mentioning before. Many districts did not participate in the CASP assessment. We decided that we did want to participate in the Smarter Balanced Assessment portion of the CASP because we wanted to be able to do that kind of comparative analysis to get an idea of where things stand compared with years past. And so this is one data source, one tool that we can use to measure that. Only one other district, that's one of the typical districts that we compare ourselves to, that's a like district with fairly similar demographics and is located in our region, New Haven, also administered the test. I should note that even though both show sixty-nine percent in ELA, we recorded sixty-eight point nine nine percent, they were only sixty-eight point seven. So we did beat them by point two seven.
It, it, it is important to say, so they were allowed to not take this test, but as you said, they had other assessments that they were able to use. So I don't know how they're actually going to use that for the dashboard. That's unclear, but.
That's part of the reason why the dashboard isn't available. I'm also for the local indicators. The board may recall that we did submit local indicators last year. Not every district did, nor were they necessarily required to do so. It's a little bit gray area, but we did submit those. So we'll have those to, to report on as well. Actually, we did report at the time we submitted them because it's a local assessment. I won't dig too deep into this slide. This is a comparison or illustrates the performance. The percentage of students that met or exceeded the ELA standards at our elementary schools. Here's the math performance at the elementary level. Here's secondary ELA. And again, the mathematics test was a local assessment. So that was not recorded on, on these data. This is a look at our ethnic subgroups. And I know the font is fairly small. That blue line represents our African-American students. The orange line, our Asian-American students. Gray is our Hispanic Latinx students. Yellow is our white students. And the light blue is our two or more races. And we saw kind of mixed results. Unfortunately, we didn't see huge rises, but also it's important to note that we did see some increase with both our Hispanic, Latino and African-American students continuing the growth from nineteen, from twenty nineteen to two thousand twenty-one. These are our program subgroups, our English learners, socioeconomically disadvantaged and special education students. Likewise, there was some change, but if you look at the back years for our special education and English learner population, the changes actually were more dramatic for our English learners in two thousand sixteen and more dramatic for special education in two thousand eighteen, going both up and down. Now granted, these are comparatively smaller groups of students. So wider shifts do happen sometimes. One area of accomplishment is continuing to look at our socioeconomically disadvantaged. They also continue to improve this, the second year. They've continued to grow, go up. Here's the math scores. We did see a decline in all subgroups, you'll notice, in math year over year. So not a dramatic shift. This matches what we saw with the overall data. Our program subgroups. This is the DNF data. And you'll notice the hu, the yellow marks, you may recall in the two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, we had the option of issuing no credit. For the DNF data, we included no credit just because even though on a peer that went on the transcripts for the interest of figuring out which students and how many students had trouble in classes. And so we saw, you know, the huge spike last year. And with few exceptions, we're returning back to normalcy. Now, the exception to that would be CVVA. However, the population at CVVA is not the population that was there prior to the pandemic. If you recall, CVVA used to be focused solely on students who had a particular interest in attending an online program. Now, many of the students, in fact, the majority of the students are attending CVVA because, for safety reasons, because they don't want to be in person. So it's a different group of students. I would more compare them to CVHS where they're drawing from. We do also know that online instruction for most students is not the best format, right? A virtual program is great for a small segment of our students. You know, many students that, that were at, the students who were at CVVA to begin with, we think benefited from it. However, for most students, that day-to-day in-class support is beneficial. So overall performance analysis, we did see performance gaps increase for our English learners. We saw an overall decline in math. However, we did see some declines at certain grade levels, declines in performance gaps for Latino, Hispanic and African-American students. Also, we saw, as we mentioned before, that the, our socioeconomically disadvantaged, we prefer to use the term economically disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged students did improve. We saw substantial decline in the number of Ds and Fs from last year. However, it's still slightly above the pre-COVID level in most cases. I don't know if it's a bright note or not, but the performance declines overall that we saw just didn't match what we were anticipating. We were anticipating based on the number of students that were getting these and Fs, what we've heard and seen in other districts and from national data to see a much more significant decline in academic performance than what we saw as measured by the Smarter Balanced Assessment. Of course, this is one tool among many, but in that regard, decline was less than we anticipated. So next, next steps. You know, a lot of the supports that we had, had in place prior to COVID have proven to be more important than ever. And, you know, Marion Meadows, who was here earlier, has led a lot of the work that we've done with social emotional supports and equity supports, continuing to focus and provide supports for historically underserved and marginalized groups. Building up our multi-tiered systems of support continues to be important. Providing professional development and support of English learners especially, but also looking at how to provide lessons that, that serve the needs of all students. And then finally, professional development around our SEL and anti-bias, anti-racist lessons, which is ongoing. As was mentioned before, these social emotional supports are as, as important as ever, if not more so. So with that, just in last slide, just training on the Renaissance Star, additional supports that we're, we're giving, training on the Renaissance Star test. So this is a program that's utilized at the secondary level. So teachers are able to provide an ongoing data analysis and support for students. Ongoing standards-based grading, we know that that's really helped. We think that that may provide, be a big part of the reason that we didn't see amount of learning loss that we might have seen otherwise because as students got disengaged or might have fallen behind because of COVID, they have more opportunities to catch up. We'll be talking in the near future, as Amadi was talking earlier, about the number of reports about a new grant opportunity. We will be getting some funding related to A through G completion. Those are the courses required for college. We're going to use that to help with credit repair for the students who are getting Ds and Fs and making sure that they're college and career ready. We're going to continue with our summer school program that we've done for, for the last year, two years now, actually in terms of the expanded summer school program. We're going to continue that this coming year as well. And wraparound services, something else that we've, we're going to be talking about that Ms. Chan has, has helped to lead and we're excited about is our wraparound services and providing new additional support at the TK eight level for after-school programs that will help students. Increased math support, we have a teacher on special assignment. We're doing model lesson, lessons, professional development, essential standards work, et cetera. We're going to continue that. And then last but not least, connected to all of this is the social emotional well-being of all of our students. We, you as a board, really were innovative in making sure that we have eleven social workers who are support and elementary counselors, supporting the social emotional needs of our students. And if students aren't emotionally healthy, you can't expect them to succeed academically. So thank you for that.
Just a couple of things, kind of as, as you were presenting. I think it's really important because you might look at that and go, why did we even take the test? Right? Everybody was required to take the test because this California state, state of California actually asked the federal government to not take the test, but were required because of elementary and secondary act. So they said, fine, you don't have to take CASP, you don't have to take STAR, but you do have to have assessments. In our district, we have been working on essential standards and, which is now finished. But there were districts that actually had common assessments from many years back that they were a lot able to use. And that's what we used for. And that's what we used for math, but we didn't have it for the, and if you remember our WASC accreditation, that was one of the things. So when sometimes we hear, you know, why are we doing this? This is why, because we should have those things in place. The other thing I wanted to say, and there was a comment about the English learners program changing it, it's because what we did was not effective, and actually the state, the blueprint for EL learners is not to have all these sheltered classes actually doing what we have switched over to do. So when we hear those things, it is really important that we don't just come up with these things, but there are things that are not effective for children, and we have to change them.
Questions?
Just a quick question. In the parent community, and I suppose just looking back like of the Obama administration with No Child Left Behind, I think for a generation, we were kind of haunted by what student testing meant. What, what, what do we really achieve from it? What's like in the current, what we're doing now? Is it a very different testing culture? Is it more not, not as present in our kids' lives compared to maybe back when No Child Left Behind was happening? I'm just trying to get a sense of how, how, how much is this part of like classroom life and a kid's time in a classroom?
To be honest, I think there is too much assessment, even with the reduction in the length of the test that we saw during COVID. I think it's an unreasonable amount of time that we spend on assessments. That said, they are required, we're required to have a certain percentage of students take the test. There are severe ramifications for the district if we don't meet that threshold. That said, there are also some benefits to, to the assessments. We do actually use the, the data that comes from state assessments to measure progress year over year. It's something that's given, not just in our district, district-wide, but we can look at how other districts, other groups of students, and really do some good comparative discussions. You can drill down on the data, down to specific claims and look at specific areas that you want to focus on. It is aligned with the same standards that we're using to develop our essential standards. There is some value, but overall, I'd say yes, if there were a way to abbreviate it. They are adding new tests. We expect a new social studies test to be added. So the challenge is there's too much testing, but there is some benefit and some use to it.
Yeah, just, just added to that, I think what's different from what you probably remember many years back is that there is, it is a lot more, we're able to disaggregate more, and it is more visible, because if you remember, like eight years ago, nine years ago, ten years ago, it would just say yes or no as a whole group, and the parents and the community didn't even have access to say, wait a minute, how come the, the data that you saw on ethnic groups was not available? So in general, these are summative assessments. It's one assessment. That's why it is so important that we continue to, now that we have our essential standards, to have common formative and common assessments throughout the year, because that's how you really see the progress. And I'm really excited about our grading change, because that in itself already provides more opportunities for kids to, really, it's about standards. Did you meet the standards or not, right? And if you didn't, what part of it do we need to help you with? It's, and that's why, when you look at the standards, you can, you know, it stacks up to be this high. That's why it's really important to pick the essential standards that each grade level in each subject needs to make. So a lot of good things, but in general, summative assessments in many countries are not even done until like, I don't know, in high school. And here, we used to have it in first and second grade, so at least now we don't have that.
Gary and then Dolly.
You know, we've been following, we've been doing this test for 20 years, and every year I've heard about them, I get the same sense, which is very mixed. I mean, the, the numbers look sort of good in a way, and I feel good about that. That, you know, they're better than what I would have expected and everything. But another part of me, though, always worries that, you know, I don't know how to get past this, but it's a different test with a different bunch of students and different external conditions. So it's really a bunch of numbers parading as data. I know it's all we got, but there are so many limitations and variables in here. I don't know how good we can really feel about it. I mean, what you said about other assessments is really a key thing, because this one is really hard to say that it's, that it's a good test. And the, the other side of it that has always bothered me is, I mean, we look at these numbers and we look pretty good compared to everybody else and everything. But those are the students that met standard, and at best here, we still have a third of our students, we're not, at least a third, in some cases, in some of the groups, it's two-thirds, are not meeting standard. If these data are valid at all, what, what kind of a statement is that about us? I mean, and I don't know what they really mean, so I hate to be terribly negative, but I also don't take a great deal of solace in these numbers.
It's a really, that's a really good point. It really is a mismatch between what the standards are and how they're actually measured. Because the assessments, that's why the, the formative assessments and the common assessments in the district are more important, or the grades are more important, because sometimes you look and say, well, this child had an A, but then their standardized test didn't come out right, because it's, it's a whole different environment, a whole different way of assessing. And again, it's a, it's a California-normed, it's actually national, many just, many states use the same assessment. So I don't, and that's the concern. That's why people who say, is it really valuable to have this or not? If, I think if you asked any of us, we would say we want a lot less of it. But until the whole system has changed, and I have to say, I believe that our new Education Secretary, Ordonez, is actually talking about redoing education, so I'm excited about that.
Dolly.
Okay, so like other teachers, I've given this test and spent a lot of time preparing, well, kids with standards to try to, you know, do this. I, I think more so when we used to have the Casey, that one was just such a high-stakes test. I really want to say that I expected to see the scores for 2021, like, drop like a rock. I am so happy to see that's not what happened. So it's, you know, there are some, you know, decreases, but they're pretty, most of them are pretty small. So I'm happy to see the scores as they are, and I also do think that we spend way too much time testing.
All right, that was an information item, so we can, if there's no more questions, we will move on to 9D.
Yes, yes. Yes, it's exciting, because we, our audit was finalized a couple of weeks ago. A year, every year, we take this to the board sometime in, well, in January, because it's, it's due in December. But because of COVID, it's actually, the deadline was extended to January 31st. So, so we have Peter Glenn here from Niagara and Niagara, who will present the, the audit report, and then also will be presenting the, the report after it, the perform, bond performance audit after this one.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Nice to be here via Zoom. And as was mentioned during the introduction, I'm going to briefly talk about the, the audit report for fiscal year-end, June 30th of 2021. So what I thought I would do is kind of just talk a little bit about the process, a little bit about the presentation of the report itself, and then, I know that sounds like a lot. I'll be quick with those items. And then I think probably most of interest is what was different about this audit as opposed to prior years. So the process, we started in 2021 in about January or so. That's usually when we finish one audit and kind of leads into another one. And we start our, you know, procedures where we're performing some control testing. We go out to the sites if we can, and I know last year we did a little bit of remote work when it came to that, and then we also did go out to a site or two as well, based on activity. And then we, we actually came out physically in June and did some work at the district office with some of the compliance areas. And then, of course, we finished everything up, coming out after the books were closed, and we came out in the fall and winter months and continued our, our procedures there with those, those year-end steps. And then, because the, the federal government was a little slow in releasing some of the additional items that they wanted us to look at for the Education Stabilization Fund, that, that information didn't actually come out till December, so that kind of strung things out a little bit longer. And as was mentioned, the deadline was actually changed to the end of January this year for the audit. So that was kind of the process. As far as presentation goes, our, our audit report looks, looks very familiar to you, I'm sure, very similar with prior years. So I thought what I would do is just talk about some of the differences year over year, because what may look similar, actually, there was, there was definitely some differences. From a state standpoint, well, let me back up. And so basically, I, I thought I'd just start from the top. If you're looking at the audit report for the first time, or maybe if you need a refresher, we have, we have several sections in our table of contents. The, the biggest section is the financial section, as you might imagine. It's got your financial statements, and it's got all of the notes that go along with those financial statements. There's a couple of additional sections to the report. There's something called Required Supplementary Information. That, those items are required by GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And then there's supplementary information, and those are the items that are required by the State Controller's Office. So those are the differences there. And then the independent auditors' reports, those talk about whether the district had any issues with any of their controls, whether they had any compliance findings, fortunately, and happy to report that your district didn't have any. And then there's the schedule of findings and question costs. That's at the very end of the, of the audit book that you receive, and usually the first place most people look. So, and, and again, good to report that there were no findings, just a few suggestions in the management letter. A couple of things that I did want to point out that were different, as I had mentioned. And one, this year, the district had a refunding. So that is a, you may remember back in April, there were some refunded, refunding bonds that were issued by the district. There was an economic gain, that's again on page 36 of the, of the audit report. So there were some savings there that's disclosed. So I thought that was of interest and not an, an every-year event. Another item that I wanted to bring out is, you may, if you were really sharp in, in looking at this year's report versus last year, you may have noticed the Student Activity Funds aren't where they used to be. And that is because, as I mentioned GASB earlier, GASB came out with a new pronouncement, as they, as they like to do. This was GASB 80, 84, and GASB 84 redefined what fiduciary funds are. So basically, GASB 84 said, if there's any administrative control over those funds, then those are not fiduciary funds. So basically, you know, when we look at student activities, and we look at how expenditures are approved, those are approved through, through a district representative. So that moved those funds from a purely fiduciary presentation down to a, a presentation which is just like, and I don't mean to minimize it by any means by saying just like, just like any of your other funds. So the district chose to record those transactions in the general fund. So those transactions now are, are restricted, same as they were before, for ASP purposes, but they are shown in the general fund, and if you looked at page 34 of your audit report under fund balances, you would see a line that says student activity under restricted. And there is where you will find that, those balances or that balance. So just in case you were wondering what happened to student funds, and we audit them the same way that we have in the past. We go out to the sites, we, we test their financials, we test their expenditures, their revenue sources, all of those things. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that although GASB looks at them a little differently, we follow our, our procedures that we have before. Some other changes year over year, well, we had all that COVID funding from the federal government. So if you looked at page 68, you would see that's your expenditures of federal sources. That's called the CIFA. That report there actually will show the COVID money. There's a, there's a header that we're required to put in for, for the reporting purposes that has COVID-19 in all caps. So if you were curious to see how much funding year over year is different from the COVID funding, that would be a good place to look, and you can see the differences between the, those federal dollars that you expended in prior years versus last year. So again, wanted to point out that difference. And the last difference I wanted to highlight was of the nature of the state, and that is through the attendance test. And again, I wanted to commend the district on not having any findings when it came to attendance testing, because this was a really difficult area for a lot of districts. And that was the distance learning, the weekly engagement records, the tiered re-engagement strategies. So all those terms, all those things that we had to, to get from the sites and the teachers and the principals and, and, and all of that. So again, that was a, I, I think that's very commendable, that the district was able to do so well in that area and have, you know, really clean, a clean audit as far as that goes. And so I wanted to make sure I talked about that a little bit. And I think from the standpoint of the district audit, I'm going to go ahead and let it rest there. And if there's any questions, or I can move on to a brief presentation on the bond audit.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Yes, Gary.
I'll just make a quick comment, and that is, it's good to again hear a good report from you on this. No findings, and that's always terrific, so thanks, thanks for looking very carefully at our money.
I also wanted to comment on the attendance records and, and the clean audit that we had there. I am friends with a lot of teachers, and I know that there was some, you know, learning about how to track student attendance during online learning, and I want to commend our teachers for doing such a good job that we had a clean audit of, of that, so. All right, this is an action item.
I'll move approval of acceptance of the audit report for fiscal year.
Thank you, Vice President Whitaker.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to commend Susie and her team for her continued efforts to make us a good, fiscally sound district.
Thank you. Jennifer, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will say yes, the motion is approved. All right, so now we can move on to the Measure G audit.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So we do have this report, and it's, it's actually less pages compared to the other reports. So, but Peter, Mr. Glenn is actually going to, to go through that, and also some changes similar to what he presented earlier for the general fund. We also had, we sold bonds and also a refunding that he's going to share.
Thank you. Yeah, so the, the bond audit is a financial audit as well as a performance audit. So that's where it's slightly different, and of course, it falls under Prop 39 requirements. And so, similar to the, the district audit, the, it was a clean audit. The, the financial statements were in order. We didn't need to make any adjustments or suggest any adjustments to, to the books. um, to the uh, books, um, which is always a good thing. Uh, so the bookkeeping was, was on. Um, and uh, as was mentioned, there was a issuance of some GO bonds. And so those are shown in the report as a thirty-three million dollar issuance. And um, then also there was the, the refunding that we mentioned previously in uh, in April. That uh, resulted in, in some savings for uh, the taxpayers um, as they uh, pay, pay for those uh, you know, uh, funds on their, on their property tax statements. Um, but again, uh, so from a financial statement standpoint, it was a clean, a clean audit. And then on the performance side of things where we actually um, do a deep dive into the expenditures and we make sure that they align with the uh, the ballot language and the facilities plans. And um, those things and that any, any contracts that are put out to bid, that those are, those are bid properly, that there's no uh, nothing that exceeds the ten percent change order limitation. So uh, we, we verify that. If there's any salaries paid out of uh, bond funds, we make sure that those all align with um, prior Attorney General's opinion on the allowability of, of any salaries paid out of bond funds. Um, so all of those things, we tested about forty-nine percent of uh, invoices paid, about five point three million. So, um, again, an audit uh, i- is not a, is not a hundred percent. It's a, you know, it does come with some risk. They're sampling, but we're confident in our opinion that, that uh, the financials are fairly stated. And um, we would also like to thank uh, the district. Um, Susie, her team, Anka, and um, and everyone there at the district who assisted us with, you know, um, helping us uh, pull invoices and contracts and uh, various documents and also uploading them on our secure portal. That's always uh, really helpful uh, to, uh, to be able to audit uh, both ways, really. So again, uh, thank you. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'd move that we um, accept to the performance audit for Measure G bond fiscal year.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Are there any questions, further discussion? Right, Jennifer, your preferential vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
Thank you. And my vote is yes. Um, motion is approved. We will accept the performance audit report. All right. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
All right, item nine F. Governor's proposed budget. Exciting.
Another exciting topic. Okay, so um, so the governor's proposed budget came out um, last month, uh, January. And this is the uh, his proposed budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, so as uh, all of you've heard, there's a budget surplus. And so um, this, you, uh, just remind, this is, first bullet is just reminding us of what happened a year and a half ago. Uh, you know, with the uh, state enacted budget, uh, was trying to address the fifty-four billion deficit at that time. And look at uh, where we are now in tw- for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, there's actually, uh, he's built in an estimated forty-five point seven billion um, budget surplus. And these, the three buckets here are where he's actually going to put the money in. So um, the, the uh, middle um, uh, bucket there, which is sixteen point one billion, is uh, for public education. So we're gonna focus on that tonight. Um, it's always good to show the Prop, uh, Prop ninety-eight, uh, since nineteen eighty-eight. You, as you can see there, nine, from nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine. I know it's kind, it's really small, uh, but we try to fit all of the um, years here from uh, eighty-eight all the way to twenty, twenty-three. As you can see, um, uh, since its uh, passage, uh, Prop ninety-eight has increased over, by over four hundred twenty-six percent. And that's what we're seeing there in twenty-two, twenty-three. It's uh, almost a hundred two billion dollars. So um, with the Prop ninety-eight funds, uh, the uh, earlier, I mentioned the sixteen uh, point one bucket. Um, this is actually where it's going. This is how it's going to be divided. So uh, community colleges will get um, a portion of that money. And then K, uh, K twelve um, is obviously the, uh, the bulk of that sixteen billion dollars. So how it's divi- it's divided uh, for K twelve is that six, sorry, four billion dollars is to, for core funding. Uh, and then uh, eleven point five billion is actually categorical funding. So we haven't really heard the past eight years categorical funding, because it's always been um, local control funding, uh, under, you know, it's all, the money goes into the local control of funding formula. So this is very different from what you've seen the last few years. Um, again, um, mo- most of the money is going towards uh, categorical funding. And then four billion is uh, uh, core funding. So let me show you where that is going. So twenty-two, twenty-three, L- LCFF, which is the Local Control Funding Formula, funding factors here. Um, uh, you've seen this uh, slide before. Um, we are funded, um, at the eighty, it's ADA, uh, average daily attendance. So for twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, uh, grade span. So you can see there from K three is different uh, for um, four to six, and then uh, nine to twelve. So the four billion is really to four billion dollars uh, is, is to fund the five point three-three percent COLA. And so that is a, a, a big increase. If you compare the, you know, just looking at that uh, column, K to three, that's an, uh, an added four hundred thirty-one uh, uh, dollars for, per uh, student or ADA, I should say. So the, the uh, adjusted grade span there uh, of eight thousand five hundred twenty-four. And there's also a um, grade span adjustment uh, of eight hundred eighty-six for K three uh, as well as supplemental funds. Um, uh, we are, our unduplicated pupil count is, is less than the uh, fifty-five, less than fifty-five percent. And so we fall under that twenty percent um, uh, bucket there. So we, and then for, for school districts uh, that um, have uh, unduplicated pupil percentage sixty-five and above, fifty-five and uh, above fifty-five percent and above, they actually get sixty-five percent. Um, recall last year, um, or so, sorry, this year it's fifty percent, but he's actually starting this year, I apologize. So it's starting this year, he did in, uh, the governor increased that to sixty-five percent. So um, they are getting um, uh, another fifteen percent on the concentration grant. And, and this is for, for districts that uh, fall under that um, fifty-five threshold, fifty-five percent threshold. So um, you've heard about the ADA cliff. Um, I know Ms. Amadi mentioned it earlier, uh, and we heard this um, numerous times because um, if you recall for uh, our first interim, our multi-year projection, I've shown you uh, the change in the uh, revenue because of the um, ADA cliff that we knew um, we, we need to address, right, um, starting next year. So um, right now, it, it, the, the left uh, side uh, is the current law for school districts, which is for um, the current year, uh, we can use to calculate our else, our revenue. Um, uh, we, we use the current year ADA or prior year ADA, which whatever is uh, the, the greater of the two, right? So current year ADA or prior year ADA. So now, in the, included in the governs, governor's proposed budget is another option. So we still get to, to account for current year ADA or prior year ADA. And then another option is the computed average ADA using the three prior years ADA. So that's three years, and then it's the, the average of those three years. So that's another option that he's uh, uh, put in the uh, proposal. So um, I'm gonna go over the, the calculation, but I wanted to show you the um, uh, enrollment uh, versus ADA for us. So we start at the bottom from thirteen, fourteen, we were at nine thousand three hundred seventeen. And then, as you can see, um, we've grown and then uh, and then there's uh, some reduction there, so a decline. And then what we're seeing in the current year, or at least a change in the current year from uh, for twenty-one, twenty-two, we're at nine thousand forty-three, uh, forty-three students. Um, the twenty-two, twenty-three is, is just, is a projection right now, uh, nine thousand twenty students. We are waiting for our um, uh, demographic report to come out in the spring. And so we should have updated information um, uh, from that report uh, in the next couple of months. But um, as, uh, then if you, uh, um, uh, look at the, towards the, the, the right side under the attendance rate, you can see how um, from twenty, thirteen, fourteen, all the way to nineteen, twenty, we always, our attendance rate, however, uh, is between ninety-six, you know, ninety-six point four percent to uh, there's uh, in thirteen, thirteen, fourteen is ninety-seven point two percent. So we're always around uh, ninety-six, you know, ninety-seven percent, which is great. Um, the twenty-twenty-one under that attendance rate is zero. And that's because uh, we were held, if you recall, we, uh, we, we were held harmless. ADA was her, held harmless in twenty-twenty-one. That meant that we can actually use prior year, which is, in this case, it really helped us, uh, because at the prior year, nineteen, twenty, our ADA was higher. So uh, we were at eight thousand nine hundred, uh, almost nine, nine hundred seventy-seven. So um, uh, to all the way to the, uh, right, uh, to the right, the last column there is funded ADA. So you'll see all that eight thousand nine hundred seventy-six point seventy-seven, three times, right, because of that um, current, current or prior year, whatever is the, the greater of the two. So, so um, we're benefiting from that, uh, you know, the ADA being held harmless, but it's not forever. So it's only good for those years. And then now, we're, we need to, to really um, think about uh, how it's going to impact us next year. So the twenty-two, twenty-three, um, this is a ninety-six point eight percent, at least, projection. Um, and then I'll show you why in the next slide. So the ninety-six point eight percent is a pre-pandemic level. So looking at this twenty-two, twenty-three attendance rate, uh, in nineteen, twenty, we, I, I covered that earlier. Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, the same, right? In twenty-twenty-one, this is actual ADA. So twenty-one, twenty-two, um, is in the current year. So we're seeing a decline in, in ADA, and that's because of, of COVID, right? So um, so we're at ninety-three point four percent. Uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, um, uh, the previous slide, I show eight thousand seven hundred thirty-five ADA, and that's uh, at ninety-six point eight percent. If we're at that pre-pandemic level. Because if we go back to, to the history, right? We were always at ninety-six, ninety-seven percent. So this, this slide here is assuming next year, we're gonna be at the pre-pandemic level. So the, with the current law, so on the right side is the uh, funded ADA for twenty-two, twenty-three, how we would look at the difference between the current law and the governor's proposal. So the, with the current law, our highest for next year, right, uh, assuming we're gonna get at that ninety-six point eight percent, we get, we, we are able to account for eight thousand seven hundred thirty-five ADA because we're gonna be, if, you know, we get to that ninety-six point eight percent. Governor's proposal is actually higher. And that's because if you look at the three years, twenty, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, add those up, divide by three, you get eight thousand eight hundred. That's the average. So the governor's proposal will act, will actually, uh, it's a difference of sixty-five ADA for us at this ninety-six point eight percent uh, level. So it's, it's, it's good for the, uh, it will be good because then we get that ninety, uh, sixty-five, sixty-five dollars and multiplied by ten thousand dollars, right? Because that's average of what we get uh, per student. So what if it's not ninety-six point eight percent? What if next year is still at the pandemic level, you know, whether that we're seeing, that we were ex- we're experiencing this year at ninety-three point four? Again, this is just a, another scenario for for us just to look at the difference between current law and the governor's proposal. So again, the same thing in the, on the uh, left side is the actual ADA. But in twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, because it's at ninety-three point four percent ADA rate, uh, it's actually eight thousand four hundred twenty-four point sixty-eight. So current law, right? Our highest is still the eight thousand four hundred forty-six point seventy-four. Uh, or sorry, current law is actually twenty-one, twenty-two is higher. So we would take that. But the governor's propos- proposal will look at, is still eight thousand eight hundred, but again, because it's taking it uh, the ADA, actual ADA from nineteen, twenty to twenty-one, twenty-two. And that's a big difference of three hundred fifty-three uh, ADA. So um, for districts in, uh, you know, including us, if we ever, if for next year, if we're at that level, at a pandemic level, uh, governor's proposal is really going to benefit us by that three hundred fifty-three ADA. So what does the five point three-three percent COLA increase mean for us in terms of uh, local control funding formula? So I just wanted to kind of simplify this, eighty-six point two million dollars is what we're getting in um, LCFF this year, twenty-one, twenty-two. Current law, which you saw the slides earlier, ADA rate at ninety-six point eight percent will get uh, eight, eighty-eight point four million dollars. And that's two point two million increase for us. But if it's at, uh, the ADA ra- rate is ninety-three point four, that, at the, the other scenario, we actually lose money. We actually lose uh, uh, about point, uh, seven million dollars. Uh, proposed law is a matter where we are at ninety, uh, ninety-six point eight percent or ninety-three point four percent. We are going to get eighty-nine point one million dollars. Uh, up from um, eighty-six point two. I'm gonna stop there because that's a lot of numbers. And before I move on to the next slide, if you have any questions.
Yeah, so we should really be thankful that the governor has come up with this. But unless it's kind of a permanent thing, in a year or two, we'll be there. So advocating to say, we've got to figure a different way out to do this whole piece. Because we can't keep waiting to say, okay, well, how are we gonna change it? So there's a lot of conversation around that coming up, so we should all be aware of it. And then, um, Ms. Chan, so for some districts, it's actually, if they're not in declining enrollment, the proposed law doesn't actually benefit them.
Correct. Yes, it, it, this only benefits school districts um, that are declining in enrollment. And, and ADA um, is, is less than what they, you know, historically have seen in the past.
Mike, you had a question?
Yeah, I, it would seem like, I, I know we are in declining enrollment, but um, it's not as bad, I would say, right, compared to a lot of other districts. And it seems like that's gonna help us. But that demographers, demographers report, I'm just wondering in the past, does that give us clues about where we see our ADA going, like how we plan into the future? Have previous reports helped us sort of know going out in two or three years, actually, we'll probably recover or we'll go in a different direction?
Yes, definitely. Uh, the, um, that demographers report is, 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 um, you know, one of the um, sources that we look at to see where we're going to be in the next five, ten years. So uh, uh, that's what we've used in the past also to when we, um, when we uh, put together our multi-year um, uh, uh, pro- uh, projection. So um, I know that uh, we, we haven't had one in a couple of years, and that's because of COVID, right? Because there were so many changes that happened. And so we wanted to make sure that even though we had a report, it's probably not going to be as good as what we know today, right? So, so that we, so that's uh, important for us to kind of hold off and then wait until they know more about what's going on, uh, with, where everyone's going and, and where. Uh, so, so that's why uh, this year was the year that we decided we're gonna um, uh, continue to, to, to um, uh, work with the, with the company to, to get our, our enrollment projection.
I'm gonna add something because this is why it's really important to have an excellent demographer. Because there have been times where districts have had a demographer, um, who said, for example, one of our neighboring districts in Alameda, you're gonna have another fifteen hundred kids and then ended up being a thousand, four hundred, five hundred students. And that is a huge problem. And I love how uh, Ms. Chan actually And I love how Ms. Chan actually does it. She's very conservative when it comes to that. So we always say, okay, we're not going to, yeah, we're going to use the lower number just in case.
Yes, yes. And we have, the report that we've had before is would always, you know, we'll say an increase of, you know, 100 kids and all of that. But until we have the kids, I don't account, we don't account for them. And that's really important, yeah.
So I know enrollment's different from ADA. Do we look at trends? Like we're in the middle of enrollment right now. Will that give us some indications about maybe the direction of things in our community? If we look at like first-time TK and kindergarten enrollment? Or does that not really tell us anything about whether we are seeing a declining community or an increasing population?
We won't know until we have the enrollment, if I'm understanding the question correctly. So for, yeah, we look at the trend of what we, but it would also have the, then we wait for the actual enrollment. So for, right now, we have a couple, two programs, right? That's going to happen, which is we have the DLI program. And then we also have the universal TK. So we're starting to look at enrollment now. And so once we have that data, and then we can kind of take a look at where we are and how many kids are we actually going to bring in more compared to what we're projecting.
Gary, you had a question?
You know, I appreciate the fact that the state is protecting us here in this era of wild fluctuations in enrollment because we sort of don't know where we are. But this is going to change in a year or two. And the legislature is going to stabilize this. And there's going to, I think there are going to be winners and losers in that. And as you said, Parveen, we need to be thinking about how we want to advocate for this one way or the other. I think, you know, there's definitely a reckoning out there somewhere. And this is a worrisome thing. But it's good that right now they're trying all kinds of inventive ways to hold us harm, relatively harmed.
And then, so a few more slides here. So we talked about $4 billion that's going into the Local Control Funding Formula. And now it's actually the 11, where the $11.5 billion is going. So I have a couple of slides. This is the first slide and then the next slide. It's just all the investments that included, that are included in the governor's proposed budget. So I'm not going to go through every single one, but I do want to highlight like the fourth bullet there, $4.4 billion ongoing for expanded learning opportunities. This is the largest investment that's in the Prop 98. And this is to provide, this is actually in addition to what we have, that he gave us this year, another $3.4 billion. That's why the total is $4.4 billion. Ms. Amadi mentioned earlier, and also Ms. Dr. Ryman, about this wraparound services. And so we will be bringing forward to you the results of that request for proposal at the next board meeting. And so we're very excited about this program. And it's really good for our students. So I wanted to highlight that because of the substantial amount that's going into that specific program. We also have the other ones that are, you know, the $1.5 billion for career pathway programs. We have the dual enrollment for $500 million. And then we've shared with you at the last MeJi update, the school facility for school instruction projects. That's $2.2 billion in one-time funds. That is going to benefit us as well. And then the other investments, transportation. We're working with, really on this with the transportation department so we can have, so we can acquire, start acquiring electric school buses and then bus charging stations. The universal access is going to continue for child nutrition. So for, this is for school meals. This is now, if you recall, there was a waiver that we, from the USDA, that we, to serve all of our students for free. The governor is now putting all that additional money. So that program continues. And that's $596 million. Special Ed will also, just to focus there on a few items there under Special Ed. For the, in Special Ed, we don't really have a lot of information yet. We're still waiting to get more additional information as to how the money is going to be distributed.
For the one-time upgrades to school kitchen infrastructure and equipment, is that something like tomorrow, if we were told you're going to get this amount of money, we would know what we would want? How would we want to upgrade our kitchens? Do we already have a plan for that?
Yeah, so we actually, we work, so our child nutrition director, we already have a list. So yes, so we have a list. And so what we did, this is actually in addition to what's included in the budget in the current year. So we already submitted an application. We're happy that there's an additional money coming in for next, for, you know, next year. So we can look at our list again of what's not funded. We can continue to do that. So it's like, we have walk-in freezers that are aging. And so that's going to be an equipment that will be, will go towards this. And then what's not included in the governor's proposed budget that we've seen in the past is the contribution. So there's no relief in district contribution for clusters and call purs. Just, this is just a list of, from 2013, the rates. When it's, from 8.25 for clusters. And for 22, '23, it's 19, 10%. And then for call purs, it started in 2013 at 11.42. And for 22, '23, it's 26.1%. And in terms of dollars, this is what it looks like. Again, from 13, '14 all the way to 22, '23. So we started at $4.8 million. Now we are projecting, it's going to go up to $14.4 million. And then I believe this is my last one. Just a review of, so for the next, we're still in February. So in a couple of months, April, we will bring to you the ZBB documents, Zero Base Budgeting Documents for review and final approval. And then we will wait for the May revise. We'll give you an update as soon as we get that. And then the 22, should be 22, '23. I apologize, 22, '23, for public hearing is June 8. And the final approval is June 22.
Any questions? Thank you, Suzy. Questions? All righty. Okay, we can move on to item 9G. Action item.
This report is fairly routine with our HR staff preparing the personnel report for your approval.
I'll move approval of personnel report.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
I think on the list, you're noticing a retirement for Ms. Perator. And I just wanted to say, it's going to be a huge hole to fill. She has been absolutely incredible. And I'm, I hope that she's actually asleep now. But we'll share with her. But she's just been a gem. And we're going to miss her and we have to replace. So thank you, Ms. Perator.
Mike, your vote, please?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. The personnel report is approved 5-0. All right, moving on to superintendent's report.
Just a couple of things. I did attend the education meeting with Assembly Member Bill Quirk. And our CVTA and CSEA presidents were also there. We, I attended the Equity Task Force. It was a great meeting. We did have our Revenue Enhancement Committee, which is now called SOAR. And SOAR stands for School Outreach and Additional Resources. And then we went to a Proctor PTA with Trustee Whitaker. And just wanted to let everyone know that CBF Spring for Education Event at Adobe is April 22. And we'll have more information on that. And then on February 19, I believe the Arts Foundation has, those of us who know Tom Jones might want to attend. It's going to be wonderful.
All right, Jennifer, is there anything else you wanted to share this evening?
Today, I had an interview with Olympian for running for the office of ASB president next year.
Wow.
Yeah, election season is coming up soon. And we're going to be having ASB Forum in March, which is super exciting. And, oh yeah, speaking of Olympian, there's a new issue out. I'm on, I'm a staff writer for Olympian, and I have two articles in this, so you should read it.
Fantastic, thank you. Mike?
The superintendent already did my updates. I was at SOAR and also the Ed Foundation and looking forward to their event this spring. Thanks.
Gary?
Well, I was at the SOAR committee meeting with Mike and Parveen. Also with Lavender, was at the HARD prep. And we had a negotiation with HARD. Attended the Spanish Language Immersion Committee meeting, which is, the thing that's great about that is they're beginning to look at secondary school implementation. That's really terrific, forward-looking. Attended my first Eden Area ROP meeting, and that went well. Very interesting. They elected their president and vice president, not me, fortunately. And the grants and so forth there look pretty promising this year, given the rosy outlook of the budget right now. And I was at the Tercio Vasquez people met with us at the wellness center at the high school a couple of weeks ago. And tomorrow, Dot and I are going down to James Logan to look at a clinic to see how that looks. So I think there's a lot of good stuff going on. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I also went to a presentation by Bill Quirk on education. But I think it was a different meeting from the one you went to, Parveen, because he was going around doing this for a few different organizations. I was at the Board Policy Subcommittee with Mike. And tomorrow, I'm going to be visiting Redwood High School. And of course, the breakfast on Saturday.
Vice President Whitaker? Most of the things I'm going to be doing, you've all said, but I'll just go over at high level at the HARD CBUSD Subcommittee with Gary and Parveen and Suzy and Sharon. I was at the Proctor PTA meeting with Parveen. Looking forward to the CVTA school breakfast this Saturday. And then the special education parent meeting next week.
Thank you. I have not represented the board in any official capacity, but I did listen in on the VGN Earth Keeper talk on, I guess it was a couple of Sundays ago. My days are all running together. And then I was invited to speak with my public health hat on to one of the clubs at the high school next week. So I'm excited to do that because I love public health. And that is it. All right. Thank you, everyone, for sticking with us to the bitter end, or not to bitter end. Meeting adjourned.